Twenty-eighth, and I would like to ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Kerner.
Here.
Commissioner Moreno.
Here.
Commissioner McKinley.
Here.
Commissioner Sacks.
Here.
Mayor Weinroth.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Sacks, would you please do the prayer and the pledge of allegiance? Everybody, please rise.
Dear God, we are thankful for this day that you have given us, for its blessings, its opportunities, its challenges. We pray for strength and guidance for each day as it comes, for each day's duties, for each day's problems. May we be challenged to give our best always, and may we be assured of your presence with us. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. Okay, do we have proof of publication?
Yes.
May I have a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
I have a motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Kerner, all in favor, all opposed, six to zero. Okay, we're going to move on to swearing in by our county attorney?
Seven to zero.
Seven to zero. I'm sorry, I'm so used to being six to zero. All right, seven to zero. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Swearing in by our county attorney, please.
All those wishing to speak or testify on any of today's items, please rise and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I see by the number of people who stood up today, we're going to have a lot of people talking, so we are certainly looking forward to hearing from you. All right, do I have any amendments to the agenda, Mr. Rutter?
Mayor, good morning, yes. And Wendy, you could actually run us through those if you would.
Yes, we do have some amendments to the agenda. Items nineteen and twenty, we have on the amendments as postponed to August 23rd, 2022. On our consent agenda, D six, Chimu MUPD, 2021, 2151, we are proposing to delete engineering condition number nine from Exhibit C three, as well as deleting architectural review number two from Exhibit C three, and then adding new site design condition number two to Exhibit C seven. Additionally, under other items, under item nine and ten, disclosures are needed, as well as number seventeen on the regular agenda. And then item twenty-one, it is a new item added as it relates to our legislative affairs and community project funding.
Okay, very good. Vice Mayor, you recognized?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to reorder the agenda as amended, moving item eighteen and twenty-one in front of our consent agenda.
Right behind the consent agenda?
Right behind, sorry.
Okay, very good.
Sorry.
Eighteen and twenty-one would be moved right behind the consent agenda. Do I have a, and that's seconded by Commissioner Kerner. All right, I'm going to look for a motion to approve the agenda as has been amended.
Mayor, do you have a vote to reorder?
On the amend, on the motion to, okay, I'll take a vote on the, on the Vice Mayor's motion to reorder the agenda, all in favor, all opposed, show that as approved, seven to zero. Now we will approve the amend, amended agenda totally, all in favor. Do I have, I had a motion?
You had a motion.
I had a second.
Okay. Do you have the names of the motion? Okay, good. No. Okay, I'm going to give it to Commissioner McKinley and Commissioner Sacks. All in favor, all opposed, show that as approved, seven to zero. Okay, everything is good. We have now got everything in order, and it's time to talk about consent. Commissioner Kerner, did you want to make a, a comment on the consent agenda before we move that forward?
Sure, thank you, Mayor, and I will do, I'm sure we'll do disclosures after, but before we do disclosures, I'll just take this point of personal privilege to thank Sinai Missionary Baptist Church. We have a wonderful congregation with us here today, led by Pastor Pierre St. Louis. If I pronounce that wrong, I apologize, but we, we very much appreciate the way that you have worked this issue through the zoning commission and through the advisory commissions and now the Board of County Commissioners. I'm excited to vote yes on this and support it, and we thank you for being here, and we thank you for your passion for your church and for your community, and you're to be commended for your efforts. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Kerner. Commissioner Bernard, you recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to weigh in also, since I, this is in Commissioner Kerner's district, however, I've been to the church so many times, so it's just happy to see so many of the members here this morning, and we look forward to supporting this item. It's on the consent agenda, and it's always great to see you, Pastor Gregor here. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kerner, I mean Commissioner Bernard. All right, we're going to do our disclosures. We have quite a few items on consent, so let's go through those, and I'm going to start from my right. Commissioner McKinley, can you do your disclosures, please, on the consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor. On consent agenda, item number one, Terra Nova MUPD, my staff spoke with Charlie Scardina Jr., and my staff also toured the site. On item number three, Palm Beach Park of Commerce, PIPD Surf House, we met with Joni Brinkman, Ray Grazziato, and Bobby Powell. And on Sinai, on item number five, Sinai Missionary Baptist Church, my staff spoke with Pastor Pierre St. Louis.
Very good. Okay, we move on to Commissioner Moreno now.
Good morning, thank you. On consent agenda, item number three, I had written communications, received project information from the applicant. Verbal communications, I met with Joni Brinkman and Ray Grazziato, sorry, couldn't resist. And on consent agenda, item five, I had written communications where I received an email from the applicant.
Very good. Vice Mayor, we'll do you next.
Thank you, Mayor. On item number one, had verbal communications with Charlie Scardina. On item number three, verbal communications with Joni Brinkman and Ray Grazziato. On item number six, I received emails. On, on item number ten, I had a site visit on May 19th, 2021, verbal communications with Tony Buchanan and Pastor Scott Kerr, and received email correspondence as well.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mayor. On the consent agenda, item number three, I spoke or met with Joni Brinkman, Ray Grazziato, Bobby Powell. Item five, Sinai Missionary Baptist Church, my staff spoke with Pastor Pierre, and that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item number one, Terra Nova MUPD, I met with Jeff Brophy, Scott Backman, Paul Africano, Harriet Fisher, and Charlie Scardina, and received verbal communications. On item number three, Palm Beach Park of Commerce, I've met with Johnny Brinkman, Raymond Grazziato, and Bobby Powell. And on item five, I've had verbal communication with Pastor Pierre Gergois, Pierre Gergois St. Louis.
Very good, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sacks?
Thank you, Mayor. On item number one, Terra Nova, I had verbal communications meeting with Scott Backman, Jeff Brophy, Charlie Scardina, and Jennifer Swartz, and I had an onsite visit. On item number three, the Park of Commerce, verbal communications, phone conference with Bobby Powell, Joannie Brinkman, and Ray Grazziato. Item number five, Sinai Missionary Baptist Church, verbal communications, my staff spoke with Pastor Pierre St. Louis. Thank you, sir.
Very good, and I will give my disclosures now. On item number one, Terra Nova, I had verbal communication with Jeff Brophy, Charlie Scardina, and their legal representative, Scott Backman. Nothing on two. On number three, with Senator Powell, Joni Brinkman, Stephanie Patricco, Ray Grazziato. Nothing on four. On number five, I have verbal communication, Pierre St. Louis. Nothing on six, seven, or eight, nine, or 10. All right, we have done our disclosures, we are ready. Do we have any comment cards on anything on the consent agenda?
Mayor, we have quite a few comment cards. I went through them, I did not see any on the consent agenda, so if I missed anyone, I apologize, and if there are none, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, and I will remind the audience, if you would like to speak on any item after the consent agenda, please fill out a card so that we can have it up here. I have a motion by the Commissioner Kerner, did you want to second that? Yes, I have a Commissioner McKinley making a second, seeing no further discussion on the consent agenda, all in favor, all opposed, that has been approved now unanimously, seven to zero. And thank you, everybody who came in on those items. All right, we're going to move on now to, where are we?
Eighteen.
Number eighteen.
That's right, we've reordered the agenda, so we're going to move to item eighteen, and I'm going to look for a motion to approve. Oh, do we have a disclosure requirement on eighteen?
No.
No, okay. No disclosure requirements on eighteen. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by the Vice Mayor, I have a second by Commissioner Sacks. Any further discussion, all in favor, all opposed, that's approved, seven to zero. Let's move on to item number twenty-one. No disclosures required on item number twenty-one, so let's see if anybody wants to make a motion to approve.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve item twenty-one, and thank staff for putting it together so quickly.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. I have a motion by Commissioner McKinley, I have a second from the Vice Mayor, all in favor, all opposed, show that as approved, seven to zero. Thank you, staff. All right, we'll go back to our regular order agenda.
Yes. It would be number eleven.
Number eleven, moving right along.
Yes, large-scale land use amendment, LGA 2022-6. It is a land use amendment for the reserve at Atlantic, and this is a companion application with number twelve, so we can turn it over to the applicant.
Excuse me, as you're departing, I'll ask you, please, to be a little quieter, we're continuing with the meeting, and again, thank you for coming. Thank you, Wendy.
Yes, and we can turn it over to the applicant for a presentation.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I have a point of personal privilege before we start the festivities this morning, if you don't mind. For the entire summer, I have had an intern who has participated through the Boys and Girls Club of Wellington and the Village of Wellington's SWAG program. We have participated in this program each year, and we've been fortunate enough to have a student from Palm Beach Central High School join us all summer. She is, it's her last day, she's working on some projects, she wants to get back to the office, which is a good sign from a young student, but I'd like to recognize Christine Esteme.
Will you stand?
For working with us all summer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and all I can tell you is our future is bright.
Very good. Thank you very much for making this trip up here and helping out. All right, let's move on with number eleven. Ms. Morton, I see you're ready to go.
I am. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jennifer Morton with J. Morton Planning and Landscape Architecture, and I really appreciate the opportunity to present the Reserve at Atlantic project to you. As you know, this project was the catalyst for change in the ag reserve. I'm excited to present these applications for increased density, which will allow for the development of multifamily housing, but more importantly, the development of workforce housing in the ag reserve. This new housing type will also contribute to the diversity of housing in the ag reserve, and will allow the schoolteachers, the restaurant employees, the librarians, the park employees, and hospital workers to live close to where they work. So with that, I know you've seen this application multiple times, so I have an overview of both the comp plan and the zoning application. We are requesting adoption of the text amendments, as well as the future land use map amendment to go from AGR to MLU. We're also requesting approval for a rezoning from AGR to MUPD and a Class A conditional use for daycare. As far as it relates to the land use, you can see the subject property highlighted here in yellow, the land uses that are surrounding that site, we have industrial to the west, commercial to the north, and then, and a mix of, a mix of land uses along that corridor. The, the text amendment was actually presented to you in May of 2021. The transmittal hearing occurred at the end of 2021. The Department of Economic Opportunity actually had no comment on this application, so this is the final stage in the application approval process. The zoning application is a request for an MUPD. You can see on this graphic that along the Atlantic Avenue corridor, we have multiple projects that are rezoned to MUPD, and we have some light industrial along the industrial node. The importance of this graphic is to show you that the overall project actually consists of two parcels. We have the thirty-eight and a half acre parcel on, on the south side of Atlantic Avenue, highlighted here in yellow, and then we have some off-site preservation on the east side of Lyons Road, twenty acres, also highlighted in yellow. So, so the total site area for the project is fifty-nine and a half acres. This slide shows the total site area, fifty-nine and a half acres, and it identifies the two parcels. Based on that acreage, we are utilizing the density of eight units per acre, which is consistent with what the board has transmitted for both this project and essential housing. That allows for four hundred and seventy-six multifamily units. This developer committed to doing twenty-five percent workforce housing, which is a hundred and nineteen units. Of those a hundred and nineteen units, normally, the workforce housing is divided into four categories, from sixty percent to a hundred and forty percent AMI. This developer committed to doing sixty percent to a hundred and twenty percent, so all those units will be divided amongst those three categories. Also unique to this project and shown on this graphic is, we've been working with the county engineering department to provide for the realignment of Half Mile Road and Smith Sunday Road. And so we are utilizing, we are utilize, we are providing, we are dedicating almost six acres of land to provide for the alignment of that roadway, of Smith Sunday and Half Mile. We've identified the dedication here, we've, I didn't, we're dedicating land for Atlantic Avenue, we're dedicating the land for Half Mile Road, it's all over two acres. We're also taking the drainage for Half Mile Road on our site, and then we are providing for some right-of-way dedication for Lyons Road. And finally, we're actually construction, constructing a portion of Half Mile Road to our project's entrance. This is the proposed site plan. You can see how the residential development is centrally located and clustered. We have a singular access point on the new Half Mile Road. We have our residential portion on the north side. Some of the amenities include a gated community, we're providing garages, we have a clubhouse that has a state-of-the-art fitness center, meeting rooms, flexible space, a business center. We also have multiple walking trails throughout the development, we're incorporating our walking trails into our onsite preservation, so a lot of open space for the residents to enjoy. This is a rendering of the proposed project. You can see that we are incorporating some of the rural architectural elements, kind of with a modern flair. We worked closely with the Alliance of Del Rey as far as the architectural style, and so you can see the two-story, one-story, two-story clubhouse as you enter, and the four-story multifamily buildings in the background. As far as community outreach, we've worked for almost two years with the Alliance of Del Rey on this project. I think you have a, a letter in your packet, they support the rezoning of the application, and then recently, we received a letter of support from the Diocese of Palm Beach, that's our neighbor to the west, supporting the project, the, because it's providing that most-needed workforce housing, and they also support the daycare center, believing that that's a needed use in the ag reserve. Again, the Department of Economic Opportunity had no, no comments, and at zoning commission, the project was unanimously approved. We have staff recommendation of approval, and, you know, we respectfully request a recommendation of approval from this board, but in conclusion, I want to thank the Commissioners, the Alliance of Del Rey, and the Palm Beach County staff for all their time and effort spent working together on this project, because it really creates additional housing in the ag reserve tier. This additional housing opportunity not only addresses the housing crisis facing Palm Beach County, but it surely will provide workforce housing, housing to those needed workers in the ag reserve. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Morton, we appreciate your presentation. Does staff want to make a presentation?
I can turn it over to planning.
Okay, good morning, Stephanie Gregory with the Planning Division. So this is a text and future land use amendment request for the ag reserve, I'm sorry, for the Reserve at Atlantic site, and as Ms. Morton mentioned, the text amendment allows the multiple land use designation in the ag reserve tier at eight units per acre, subject to locational criteria. So the concurrent flu amendment requests the MLU designation with institutional, ag reserve, and eight units per acre for the development of four hundred and seventy-six multifamily units with a hundred and twenty student daycare. For a brief history, this amendment was one of three ag reserve text initiation requests at the May 2021 BCC meeting, and was the only one that the board initiated that day. The applicant's request for higher density on the site preceded the Fall 2021 Ag Reserve Workshop, where the board provided direction for staff to evaluate a holistic approach for higher densities in the tier to facilitate workforce housing. This direction resulted in staff returning to the board with a county-initiated text amendment for essential housing, which was initiated in February and transmitted in May. The Reserve at Atlantic text amendment is similar to essential housing in that it allows eight units per acre with a sixty percent preserve requirement, and initially, both the amendments require twenty-five percent of the workforce housing units onsite. However, in order to incorporate additional affordability requirements for the essential housing projects, staff will be modifying the EH amendment for the board's consideration at the August 25th adoption hearing, and that is to increase the workforce housing requirement from twenty-five to thirty-five percent, and to add the forty to sixty percent income range. When the board last heard the Reserve at Atlantic amendment in November 2021, staff's recommendation was denial, and this recommendation was based on the applicant's text amendment at the time, which provided provisions to allow higher-density approval through a zoning application, changes to preserve area uses, and a reduction in the preserve area percentage. However, all of those provisions are no longer part of the text amendment request. Also, whether to allow higher-density residential in the tier is a policy decision by the board, and through the transmitted essential housing amendment, the board did provide direction regarding the location, density, and preserve requirements for multifamily residential. Therefore, the staff recommendation has been modified to approval with conditions. Staff also modified Exhibit One to clarify the requirement for the realignment of Smith Sunday and Half Mile Roads, limit the site to four hundred and seventy-six units, and to delete Conditions Four and Five, which are no longer applicable. Last October, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to deny the application, as the request was considered to be premature at the time. The board did transmit the item on November 3rd. The Department of Economic Opportunity had no comments on the amendment, and the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council expressed that the proposed amendment could reduce the potential for ag-related uses and create a domino effect for nearby properties. However, as previously mentioned, this is being addressed through the additional higher-density request, through the EH amendment with specific criteria. So the motion for the board's consideration is to adopt, and this concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. All right, this is going to be a concurrent application with number twelve, so we will do disclosures when we get to number twelve. All right, and we have a lot of cards, so do you want to take our public comment first before we address this? Let's do that. All right, Commissioner Kerner?
Excuse me, through the chair. Since eleven and twelve are together, would it be appropriate that we did one set of public comment for eleven and twelve together? Is that suitable?
It would work for me, can you?
Because most of the cards that we received said eleven dash twelve.
Okay.
I think that would be appropriate. If you do it that way, I would recommend doing disclosures now before public.
All right, then let's go ahead and do disclosures, get that out of the way. Excuse me. I'm going to go from left to right. Commissioner Sacks, you are up first. This is on item, regular agenda, twelve.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And on item number twelve on the regular agenda, I've had verbal communications, meetings with Jennifer Morton, Lauren McClellan, Gabe Bove, Jonathan Cooper, Jim Knight, and Emily Stouffer. I have to receive and file correspondence and emails, and I've had a site visit.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bernard, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item number twelve, I've met with David Abers, Emily Stouffer, Gabe Bove, Jennifer Morton, Jim Knight, Andre Fladel, Rick Aznadi, Lauren McClellan, and Jonathan Cooper. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mayor. On item twelve, I met or spoke with Jennifer Morton, Lauren McClellan, Gabe Bove, Brett Gelsamino, and received correspondence.
Very good. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. On item number twelve, I had verbal communication with David Abers, Gabe Bove, Barbara Roth, Steve Wallace, Jennifer Morton, and Lauren McClellan, and received emails.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Moreno?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, on item twelve, I received emails, correspondence, and project information from the applicant and residents, and I had verbal communications with Jennifer Morton, Lauren McClellan, Gabe Bove, and David Abers.
Thank you. Commissioner McKinley?
My office received written communication, and we also had verbal communications with Steve Wallace, Barbara Roth, Jennifer Morton, Gabe Bove, and Dave Abers.
Thank you very much. And my disclosure for item twelve is I had verbal communication with David Abers, Gabe Bove, Jennifer Morton, Lauren McClellan, and Jim Knight, and I have various emails, which are a matter of public record. All right, we are now going to take the public comment on both item eleven and twelve, since they are concurrent. Are you done? Yeah?
Just one, one more comment, sorry. Since we are combining both items, it is within your discretion to enlarge the time for public comment, if you so choose.
I think we're going to stick with three minutes. I think that that should, we have an abundance of cards here, and I think that that should satisfy the need to speak to us. All right, Ms., Commissioner Kerner, would you please call our first two guests?
Thank you, Mayor, and as a reminder, if you submitted a card for both eleven and twelve, we're, I'm going to call you once, and you'll have your opportunity to speak. So we'll start with Linda Smith and Gail Ladd.
And I'll ask you to take both sides, so we can do this expeditiously. If you're on deck, take the other side. Ms. Smith, you are recognized. Three minutes.
Thank you, Linda Smith, Jupiter, Florida. First, I have to say it's a little challenging to stand, change the longstanding rules that we could put in cards, as long as we put them in before the item was addressed. I understand might not have been written down. On just the ag reserve in general, in my opinion, the commission is assisting in the upheaval of the Florida ag reserve as we know it, and creating a tier that is indistinguishable from the urban and suburban tiers. This fundamental departure from the longstanding principles set out in the comprehensive plan for the preservation of the ag reserve, I ask you to stop that now. Specifically on F-11, despite its name, Reserve at Atlantic is not suitable for the ag reserve tier. The thirty-three-point-eight acre lot is currently row crops, and could, under the current land regulations, have up to thirty-eight homes as a portion in the agricultural PUD of seven units if subdivided. The Reserve at Atlantic would instead be a high-density neighborhood with four-story buildings, parking garages, and up to four hundred and seventy-six units, or five hundred and twenty units, depending on how this commission votes on the zoning and the on how this commission votes on the zoning and the 120 student daycare. Just a note, if you didn't allow the homes, you wouldn't need the daycare. The proposal would increase traffic to approximately 3,191 trips per day at an increase of nearly 2,000 trips. On F12, this is the companion request, as you said, is also inconsistent with the comprehensive plan and guiding principles of the ag reserve tier. The four-story building and parking garages will be incompatible with the character of the ag reserve tier. There are other places already designated for high density around the marketplace, for example. The requested 25% reduction in recreation due to the inclusion of the onsite 11.47 acre preserve parcel with trial is just another attempt for the applicant to utilize more land for development rather than complying with the longstanding principles that have excluded traditional development features from preserve use and will provide other preserve owners justification for requesting that their parcels be re-designated as well. I believe everyone probably on the board received a letter from our attorney, Robert Hartzell. I guess they charge by the page personally. I'm sorry, it's nine pages long. But I hope, because you've gotten other correspondence from our lawyers in the past, I hope you will read them. You folks probably can understand it a lot better than I. I'm just a volunteer advocating to try to keep the preserve preserved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. And we will acknowledge receipt of Mr. Hartzell's letter of nine pages. And we, I'm sure most of us have gone through it and understand the position of 1,000 Friends of Florida and Sierra Club Alhakahachi Group. Okay. Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mayor. Following Gail Ladd, we'll have David Vargas and then Jim Knight.
Mr. Vargas, if you'll take your position over here, that would be appreciated. You're recognized for three minutes.
Okay. I'm Gail Ladd from Jupiter, and I totally support what Linda just said. I just wanted to add a few things. The Reserve at Atlantic has been before the commission as we know before, and we have the idea of workforce housing here. I think that it's really unlike units that are designed in the urban suburban tier, which those workhouse housings, from what I understand, have never ever been built. And I think that's where that emphasis should be, not in the ag reserve. The death of the ag reserve by a thousand cuts must stop. To allow for an incompatible increase of density and intensity will nullify the very spirit of the ag reserve. Developers should not look to the ag reserve for exemptions from the preserve and density requirements unique to this tier. Balanced growth does not mandate that the guiding policies and objectives of the comprehensive plan should be displaced, rather that smarter and more sustainable development must be achieved in conformity with the regulations already set forth to protect the ag reserve tier. To allow for the continued increase of density and intensity beyond the original intention of the comprehensive plan would nullify the very spirit of the ag reserve and would mutate the environmentally sensitive and rural lands into an urbanized area of indistinguishable from the rest of Palm Beach County. Let's not let it become just like a neighborhood.
Thank you.
As we have workforce housing, of course, we need it. But let's put it in a better area, not where the ag reserves should be preserved. Rather than opening up this land and reducing preservation requirements, the county should focus on acquisition of lands to remain preserved, converted to green open space, including parks, equestrian trails, wetland restoration, additional tree canopy of national plants such as cypress. To assist with water quality, carbon sequestration, and buffering the county's environmentally sensitive areas, and return the ag reserve tier to its unique farmland and wetlands composition rather than sprawling developments situated throughout. I ask that you deny. Thank you.
We thank you for your comments. Mr. Knight, you're next.
Good morning, Mayor. Commissioners, Jim Knight, 740 Havana Drive, Boca Raton, Florida, native here of lovely Palm Beach County. I'm here in support of the project. I do want to disclose I am the broker for the landowner on the property. I don't want anybody to not know that. But the reason for the support is, we've been reading in the papers for the last two years on the fact that there's somewhere about 100,000 workforce housing units that are needed here in Palm Beach County. We have a $200 million bond issue that this board is moving forward to the constituents to vote on here in November to help plug that hole. Directly across the street, I have a different opinion than the last two speakers about the location of this. Directly across the street, there's a new surgical center and medical office building of a total of 120,000 square feet where people can literally cross Atlantic Avenue and be right here at the housing. You also have the Delray Marketplace that's there. With the expansion of the GL communities and out there and so forth, there are a significant number of higher-end homes that have been built out here. And one of the big things that's been talked about in general in this country over the last few years is diversity. And this will add a diverse stock of housing in the ag reserve that doesn't exist today. If one of my children wanted to live out here, they now would be able to live out here. They can't afford a 1,006 home with GLs to purchase at this point in time in their life. Hopefully, they can one day, but not now. And I just want to say thank you very much for your time. I support the project, and I hope you vote favorably for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Is there David Vargas here that would like to speak?
Okay. So for the record, he is not going to speak, but he's in support.
I apologize. He clicked. I do not want to speak. Tim Linkus and then Joe Mulvahill.
Joe, if you'd go over here.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and all the commissioners. My name is Tim Linkus, 8289 West Pointon Beach Boulevard. I've been around in the ag reserve. I grew up in Pointon, worked for American Foods, started in 1971, growing tomatoes, vegetables, and all, and then went on my own. But I'm in full support of this project. Mr. Bove has put together a great plan. He's studied the ag reserve. He is, I truly feel he does care about it. And he sees a need for this project, and he's put a very good plan by working with staff who has done a great job. He will provide needed workforce housing for teachers, police, nurses, and in general, all the personnel that work along the businesses in Atlantic Boulevard. There is a need for this project, and I do support it 110%. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Linkus. Mr. Mulvahill, three minutes.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Joe Mulvahill, 9821 Happy Hollow Road, Delray Beach, Florida. I'd like to say I do support this. It's a much-needed project out there. And when people get up and talk about there's no more land in the ag reserve, I mean, the county bought a couple thousand acres with the money that was approved back in 99. GL now homes has probably another 10,000 acres. This is a private piece of land that somebody's owned. The land has been in the family since like the mid-'80s. I've been driving by for years. I mean, Bender's already pulled their pumps out of it, and workforce housing and a daycare is needed, and I support it, and I hope you will too.
Thank you very much for your comments.
All right. Next, we'll have Brett Gelsamino, followed by Heidi Mahaffey, Esquire.
You are recognized for three minutes.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. First of all, my name is Brett Gelsamino, 4200 Southwest 131st Avenue. I'm a Palm Beach County native, born and raised here. As my career has taken me around, I'm currently down in Broward County, and desirous of coming back this way, frankly, would already be up this way, I think, if it just weren't for how expensive it has gotten in the last couple of years. As we talk, we initiated the conversation on this about more than a year ago. But a year ago today, the median home price in Palm Beach County was $500,000. Today, it's $620,000. In just 12 months, it's gone up 24%. And at same time, interest rates have gone up 85%. The compounding effect of those two forces mean that the median home burden, the monthly burden for somebody buying a median home-priced home in Palm Beach County, has increased from $3,200 a month to $5,000 a month. That's the crisis that we hope to address in part by way of creating a solution to deliver workforce housing units in an area where we feel they're needed. We're not here to decimate the ag reserve. We hope that you don't think that this project, the way it's designed, decimates the ag reserve. In fact, for every one acre we develop, we set aside one and a half acres into preservation. So we're actually taking land that's not in preservation today and entering it into preservation. I think that's a smart use of land, a responsible approach to development. And thank you guys for your courage in helping to work on this policy, to help massage the design to where we have resulted today, and hope that we support the final adoption today. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Samino.
Good morning, Heidi Mahaffey. On behalf of 1,000 Friends of Florida and Sierra Club Alhakahachi Group, this has been before the commission before in the past, and as was stated before, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to deny it. And even though DEO did not have any comments in support or in opposition, we need to look at what the Treasure Coast Council did say in opposition to this particular proposal, that it could create a domino effect that will affect not only other developers coming in and asking for increased densities, but also the integrity of the parcels, of the preserved parcels themselves. Throughout the staff report, there made mention of this fundamental departure from the fundamental policies of the comprehensive plan. When the law looks at the comprehensive plan, it is a constitution for this commission and for the guiding principles of regulations for land development, management, and increases of densities and intensities, a constitution that is supported and upheld by the constituents themselves. This commission has an obligation and a duty to the residents to have an unwavering dedication to the intent, original intent of the ag reserve, which is to preserve agricultural uses, open space, environmental and water resources. What is happening with the Reserve at Atlantic is just inappropriate for the ag reserve. The increased densities would be eightfold and would mutate the preserve uses. What they're asking for is onsite preserves that do not protect agriculture uses and are essentially asking for the traditional development features to be included in the onsite preserve that gives them a bigger area of development. We agree that affordable housing is needed in Palm Beach County, but workforce housing in the way that it's being presented is not appropriate for the ag reserve. The workforce housing that is being presented by the Reserve at Atlantic will be for rental units, and the typical price could be anywhere from more than $900 to over $1,200 for a one-unit rental. And some farm workers that the ag reserve is supposed to protect may not even be able to afford those particular pricings for this workforce housing. Within the staff report, there is an abundance of concern about a departure from the policies. Nearly every single policy in 1.5 is found to be, this proposal is found to be in contravention of those policies. And the guiding policy for the ag reserve is Objective 1.5, which this proposal, and I quote, "does not preserve or enhance agricultural activity as it does not propose to preserve land for agriculture or foster low-density development." We object to the Reserve at Atlantic FLU amendment as well as the zoning plan amendment, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Mahaffey. We appreciate your comments.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll now have Mr. Drew Martin, followed by David Abers.
Morning, Drew. It's always great to see you.
Thank you, Mayor. It's always great to see you and the smiling faces on the commission here. There's a huge disconnect in our society right now. We turn on the TV, and we see forest fires, we see climate change, we see drought. Most of the vegetables produced in the United States are actually produced in California and Arizona. They're going to be cutting back significantly. We see inflation. Why do we have inflation? Because we don't have local production anymore. I was reading how a lot of these containers with fruits and vegetables end up stuck at the ports, and the food goes bad because they don't get them out of the port soon enough. The containers overheat. So here we have local food that we're producing locally that's bringing down the cost of our grocery bill. But we're going to ignore that today because all we're going to focus on is that there's going to be some workforce housing. Now, I was a full-time teacher for a short time, but I couldn't afford workforce housing. It's out of my range. It was out of my range. It's certainly out of the range of shop, people who work in the shops, people who work in the fields. You know, most people don't live near. Nobody's going to walk across Atlantic unless they're suicidal. It's going to be, row crops are going to be gone. So what you're really doing is you're just, you're going to be today pushing up the cost of groceries for your constituents by doing away with locally-produced food. Now, people will say, well, this is just one plot. But then you heard what they get up and say, well, you approved the hospital. You approved, you know, the shopping center. So now it's our turn. And what's going to happen with the next landowner? They're going to be back with the same thing. Because, of course, anybody who's a farmer, if they want to sell out and they make a quick buck, this is the opportunity. Buy ag land at an ag land price, you pay a lower tax rate, and you wait until you can get the commission to rezone it, and you get 10, 20 times what you paid for it. And that's basically what they're doing. Now, the Sierra Club volunteers are the few people that are going to get up here today who are not going to get, we're not going to make any money, whatever your decision is. Most of the people who are going to get up and speak in favor of this are all people who are going to receive economic benefit. That's fine. That's fine in the United States. Nobody says they can't. But when you listen to these comments, please remember that what we're telling you, we're not up here because we're going to make money, we're going to sell land. We're up here because we want to do what's best for the country and what's best for your constituents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ma. Commissioner McKinley, you want to be recognized?
Yes, thank you. And I have always appreciated the comments that Drew has made, and he does make you think twice. But I am a little offended classifying our farmers and our agricultural industry as sellouts. What they're dealing with right now, they're not selling their land because they want to. They're selling their land because the ability to farm in the United States, particularly in Florida, is getting harder. Their fuel costs, their fertilizer costs are through the roof right now. They can't find local workers, so they have to bring in H2A visa workers. When you bring those workers in, you're required by federal statute on how much you have to pay them. Those rates have gone up. They have to provide housing, transportation, food costs, laundry facilities, all of that for those workers. That comes out of their pocket. And then with the trade agreements that this country has passed, particularly NAFTA and even the revised US MCA agreement, the dumping rules, they can't bring dumping cases. I testified before the International Trade Commission on this one. The dumping that's occurring from produce out of Mexico is putting our row crop growers out of business. I mean, all you have to do is go talk to Steve Bender and some of our pepper farmers and tomatoes and strawberries and blueberries. Mexico is absolutely crushing us. So I do hope that your advocacy not only takes you before the county commission, but I hope it takes you before members of Congress, asking them to close that trade loophole. But our farmers are not sellouts. They're struggling to stay afoot. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, Ms. Abers, your turn.
David Abers, North American Development Group, 5500 North Military Trail, Unit 144, Boca Raton, Florida. I moved from Fort Lauderdale about a year and a half ago, and it's probably one of the best decisions I've made in my life. I was living downtown in a high-rise. Now, still living in an apartment, but you know, it's Palm Beach County life versus Broward, which I greatly appreciate. We are lucky enough to be partners We are lucky enough to be partnering with Gabe Bovee on this project, and we are obviously in support of this project as well. I'd just like to make note that we've been, you know, working with staff over the past few months, and they've been an absolute pleasure to work with, not only on this project, but other projects we're working on in unincorporated Palm Beach County. We're also lucky to be doing business in Palm Beach County, and we've been headquartered here for roughly 30 years. I should have bought a home two years ago, but hindsight is 20/20. I'm currently renting, and this is a community I envision myself living in when it is delivered. I can already see myself taking my Golden Retriever, using the 12-acre Preserve Passive Park, and enjoying the surrounding amenities. It's going to be a Class A product, best-in-class amenities, and we're excited to deliver that for everybody in the community. Again, I just wanted to make it quick. I appreciate your time and consideration for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abers. We appreciate your comments.
Mayor, that concludes comments by the public.
Okay. Commissioner Sacks, you'd like to be recognized?
Thank you, Mayor. This is my district, and I'm very much concerned with every little parcel of land in District 5, whether it's ag reserve or not, but especially if it's ag reserve, because it's a precious part of Palm Beach County and Florida. This particular parcel, I know very well. It is not row crops. It is pretty much scrub. Half Mile Road is a dead end, and the area around the church has been used for storage of various machinery. So we're certainly not going to take out of use tomatoes or peppers or any of the good agricultural crops that our good farmers have so well-produced for all of us. I want to thank the Sierra Club and 1,000 Friends. You guys are pure. You say it as it is, and we need you always to not just preserve the ag reserve and protect it, but also to preserve what is so much a part of Palm Beach County, and I thank you for that. I know this area well because I live very close to it, and I have watched Gabe Bovee produce, imagine a dream, and have that dream come true. We've worked well together, sometimes arguing with each other, but always looking forward to the highest, the highest and best use of this land. Now, let's take a look at it. The master plan of the ag reserve identified two geographic areas for a marketplace. Thank you, Lisa. One is Atlantic and Lions Road, and the other is in Boynton Beach, at those two big intersections. We have that. We have the Delray Marketplace, and it's awesome. We could use some better parking and some more restaurants, but other than that, it's a very, very fine place to have, to be able, for their western communities, to be able to have a good dinner or to see a movie. We don't have any diversity of types of residences. We have, and this occurred before I was here, a whole strip of gated, high-end houses. And the folks who live, the folks who work at the Delray Marketplace really have no place to live. Every time I go there, I ask them, "How's business?" Because I want them to have a lot of good business, because that's taxes that pay for all of us. "How's business?" "Business is good." "Where do you live?" "Well, you know, 40 minutes away," and things like that. So this highest and best use of this parcel will give us a diversity of housing for the people who work in this area, who work across the street at the Delray Marketplace. It also gives something that I want all of us to understand on this dais, and that is, we have seniors who have a very difficult time finding a place to live. They may not want to live in Century Village or Kings Point. This diversity of workforce housing with the elevators will give them an opportunity to live right across the street from some of the best restaurants in town. And so Daniel Hartman from the Jewish Family Services have always requested that we have a place that seniors can live, and they would love to live close by young families, but be able also to walk across the street and have that Delray Marketplace for them. So I think it's a, it's a very good thing on this diversity of housing, and I think it is the highest and best use. Now, Gabe and I have also, Gabe Bovee and I have also talked about realigning Smith-Sunday Road with Half Mile Road. I don't know how the heck you're going to do that, but this is going to be an engineering feat to do the two of them, and I think it's a good thing that y'all are going to pay for that, and we're not going to have to pay for it, because it is a county, they're county roads, and they do need to be aligned. And so I appreciate the developer doing this and not the taxpayers. Also, the daycare. I don't know if you know, but I have a toddler living with me. And I tell you, there is a waiting list for daycare centers in this county. And it is a waiting list for, like, by the time this kid is in high school, he will have a spot in some daycare somewhere. So I've already put my name down for that daycare, Gabe, so let's get this thing moving. 120 kids, we need it. We need it, and I appreciate having a daycare there. Let's talk about the neighbor. Our Lady Queen of Peace has been there for years and years and years. It's a mission. Our Lady Queen of Peace started as a mission for the migrants, because years ago, there were migrants living there, and most of them were Catholic. I've been going to that church for many, many years, and they are so excited about having a daycare there. And they're so excited about Gabe Bovee is going to work with them in the future to see how we can help the neighbors help each other, our Lady Queen of Peace, with this, with this new project. The only thing I ask the developers, the reserve, we already have a reserve at Clintmore and 441. So whatever we can do to maybe change the name and maybe make it a little more ag, you know? I mean, we are in the ag reserve. We can make it a little more country. It would be good. I'll leave that up to you folks in marketing. But I support this, Mayor, and fellow commissioners. It's in my district, and I've worked with this for a while, and I think it's a good project, and I think we should approve.
Thank you, Commissioner. We appreciate your comments. Commissioner Kerner, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor, and certainly I'm committed to listening to my colleagues on this board who speak after me. And I wasn't very excited about this project, particularly early on. I believe I voted against it on transmittal. But given the comments by Commissioner Sacks, and given the work product, and changed circumstances, and dialogue with the developer, Ms. Morton, Brett, and Mr. Bovee, I will vote for it. So I appreciate the leadership that you've provided. You've made a very articulate presentation from a policy perspective. I'm not a fan of big, large densities, really much anywhere, but particularly in the ag reserve. But given your leadership and everything you've done, and the applicants, quite frankly, I've watched them be in this room for, it feels like, two years now, crafting a policy that will adapt with the current market forces and times and needs of our county. I'm willing to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sacks, would you put a motion on the table?
Thank you, Mayor.
And we're just going to deal with 11 first, so that would be for the approval of conditions, the staff recommendation. Motion to adopt the ordinance for reserve at Atlantic FLU and text amendment.
So well said.
And I will take that as a motion by Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you, sir.
And I have a second by Commissioner Kerner. Okay, we're going to continue our conversation, and it's Commissioner Marino.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I've been pretty consistent. I like the idea of the project. I don't like the idea of the density. I think I had said to staff many years, many months ago, that six would be fine with me. Eight is too dense. You know, the original plan for the ag reserve did call for multifamily, and there isn't any multifamily, so this does answer that. But again, I still think it's a little dense, and I've talked to Gabe, and Dave, and Jennifer, and you know my feelings, so I'm pretty consistent in what that is. So while I like the project, I don't approve of the density, so that's my, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Marino. And I will pipe in here, since I have no more lights. I think it's an accomplishment to the developer and to the land use attorneys and to everybody else involved in this project that not only is the district commissioner in support, but we also have the Alliance of Delray Beach, yeah, a Delray Residential Associations in favor. You know, we've talked a lot about workforce housing up here, and as already been said, we have, as a body here, placed on the ballot in November, a request that our residents embrace the idea of a general obligation bond in the amount of $200 million, so that we can address this problem. And this problem is only getting worse, and as we heard from the numbers, if something was, you know, expensive before, in the next, last year, it's gotten more expensive. And with interest rates, it's made even more expensive. And I've, many times before, I've said that anybody making $70,000 a year cannot even afford to rent in this county because the rent that they should be paying, 30% of their income, is only, or is $1,800 a month, and that's out of reach for many people. The number I heard today, $900 to $1,200, is a number that's within reach of someone who's making $40,000 a year. This is a number that we need to have. This is a number that we need to embrace. And if we're going to do anything about the crisis of housing in this community so that people can live, work, and play in the community, then we need to do something like what has been put before us here today. I think that this is an appropriate project. I am mindful of what has been said by our friends at Sierra Club. I am certainly mindful of the issues that you are addressing. But this is the perfect place for this development. We're going to cap it at 476 units, not going to be any more than that. And I think that a lot of work has been done, and I congratulate everybody who's worked on this to take it to this point. And I think that this is a project that I have no problem supporting today. So seeing no more further comments on the, on the dais here, I have a motion by Commissioner Sacks, a second by Commissioner Kerner. I think we have one negative vote. Well, let's see. All in favor? All opposed? Show that as a six to one with Commissioner Marino being against, dissenting. Okay. We are, we have approved that, that number 11. Now, we're going to move on to number 12. Commissioner Sacks, would you like to make the motion on this one?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I would. I'd like to make a motion to adopt number 12 PDD slash CA 2022-00192.
And that's a motion to adopt a resolution approving official zoning map amendment from the AGR zoning district to the MPUD zoning district, and simultaneously, a motion to adopt a resolution approving a Class A conditional use to allow a general daycare. I have a motion by Commissioner Marine, I'm sorry, Commissioner Sacks, and a second by...
I just want to make sure that I'm seeing that the motion doesn't include subject to the conditions of approval, so I just want to make sure that that's incorporated into the motions as well.
Absolutely. Commissioner McKinley? Okay, I have a second by Commissioner McKinley. All in favor? All opposed? Commissioner Marino, are you opposed? Okay. Show that as approved, six to one, Commissioner Marino being in dissent. All right. That's all for those two items. We are now going to move on to item 13. Thank you, everybody. We appreciate your comments, but since you're not by the microphone, we can't accept them right now. All right, we're going to move on to item 13, which is Melrose PUD. Staff?
Item 13, DOA CA 2021-1576, is the Melrose PUD, specifically the commercial pod within that PUD. The request before the board has been presented previously at an April hearing, and the request is to modify, as well as a Class A conditional use for the restaurant. At this time, the applicant had postponed previously to discuss further with the residents, and I'll turn it over to the applicant to do a presentation and update since last presented.
Thank you very much. Mr. Brophy, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Vice Mayor, Commissioners, good morning. For the record, Jeff Brophy with WGI. We did, in fact, we were before you 90 days ago, and we did, we did take a break in order to continue to meet with the community. Uh-oh. I think that's probably everybody.
Just wait for a second until that clears. Thank you. Okay, you can continue, Dave.
And so we have had very cordial conversations through email, and we also had a rainy Saturday morning onsite meeting at, onsite? I'll just keep going. I'm used to it. And, and so we have, I would love to say, you know, every time that we come up here that, that we're holding hands and we agree with everything between the two parties. I think there's a lot of concessions that have been made and that we agree to, and you'll see that in my presentation. It's not everything that the community is looking for, but what we do feel is reasonable for, for the application that's, that's been submitted here today. Just so, in regards to location, to orient everyone, outlined in blue is the Melrose PUD. This was approved back in the late 90s, just south of Hypoluxo, between State Road 7 and Lions Road. Outlined in the red and yellow there is the commercial pod. And again, this commercial pod was approved back in the late 90s. It has sat vacant for quite some time, and you'll see kind of the development as it's gone through over the last couple of years. The community does have a light located on Lions Road, and it also has an entrance on State Road 7. And that's currently, that, that entrance does not have a light. We do have a condition of approval that requires us to post surety for the light, and that was an existing condition of approval and one that will continue, and one that we, we definitely support. We truly want to get the light at that intersection. Again, this is the old master plan, originally approved for 53,000 square feet, plus or minus. We're right around 39,000 square feet, so about a 26% reduction from what was originally approved. This is the subject site. You can see on State Road 7 and Armon Place. And this is, this aerial is a little dated. Right now, the building is in, the pavement is in, and it's substantially complete at this point. The request is for a DOA to reconfigure the plan, as well as to allow for the type 1 restaurant. We do have staff recommendation of approval with conditions, and we have zoning recommendation 9 to 0 for, for approval. This was the plan that was approved for the commercial. It was approved a couple of years ago, 38,200 square feet, mainly medical office with some inline restaurant and, and retail. The plan has not changed substantially in the sense that the building size has not changed. The parking areas have not changed. The, the only difference with this application is the inclusion of the type 1 restaurant on the north side of the building, and a slight increase due to outdoor dining to 39,132. Still, the majority of the complex being medical office and then some, some inline restaurant and retail. This is the rendered plan. Again, here, we're at the corner of State Road 7 and Armon. We have an ingress, egress point here, located on the eastern side of the, of the project, and an egress only on the western side. And what that will allow for is the, the users of the site to enter on the eastern side, but exit, and it's, it will be funneled, so the traffic is only going westbound out, out to the intersection. The drive-through location will be on the north side of the building, with the intent of us installing the light at the intersection here. Again, this is the traffic flow that would allow for the patrons to enter the site on the eastern side, wrap around if you were going to use the drive-through, or you were going to park on the east side of the building, which is all where the main entrances to all the stores are going to be. You would park there, and upon exiting, you would use the egress only and be funneled out to the intersection. There were some questions in regards to the last hearing about stacking. And so I did want to show how the, the stacking will be accommodated on-site. Your code requires eight stacking positions. Right now, on the site plan, we've identified 10. But in addition to that, we also have additional stacking, which can accommodate an additional 20 cars. So we have, if you wanted to, you could stack approximately 30 cars in order for, for that drive-through. drive-through. Some examples of some other ones, this is, this is at Hypoluxo and Lyons. This is, this is a coffee shop here. This has approximately about 15 stacking positions. And another, this is Lantana and 441, has about 14 stacking spaces. So we have about double the amount of two other local examples in the area. Before you today is a Class A conditional use. As I mentioned, the site plan itself is not being modified. But the, we, in order to achieve the Class A conditional use, we do have to meet eight criteria that's listed in the code. According to your staff report and, and your staff, we meet those eight criteria. And they include consistency with the comprehensive plan. There is a maximum square footage based on FAR. Obviously, I've already discussed that we're well below what, what that is and also what was approved on the original master plan. We're also considered in an overlay district because of our location in the Cobra area, and we do have a letter of support from Cobra. We do have to meet the consistency with the Unified Land Development Code. We meet all the property development regulations as required by, by the code for a commercial pod within a PUD, including access, parking and loading, arc review, landscape, signage, location and separation criteria for the restaurant, as well as outdoor dining. In regards to compatibility with surrounding uses, as listed in your staff report, any potential impacts have been mitigated accordingly through new or ongoing conditions of approval and through requirements stipulated by the code. And to bring up the example of Hypoluxo and Lyons again, again, this was a, ended up being a Dunkin' Donuts. It was located within the Town Commons Plaza and actually has a proximity closer to residential units than, than we have. It also shares access with the residential units for exit and entrance onto Hypoluxo Road. This morning, you approved on consent the Terranova Project, who has, its project is within closer proximity with its drive-through to existing residential units, and also, also shares an access road exiting out between the commercial and the residential onto Atlantic We also have to design it so it minimizes adverse impacts, and so there are conditions of approval that limit hours of operation from 6 to 10. I think there's somewhere in the staff report that lists 6 to 11. It's actually 6 to 10 in the conditions of approval. We are limiting ourselves in regards to the location of our outdoor dining, conditions for building height. We are restricting ourselves on the outdoor activities within the outdoor dining. There are current conditions of approval for lighting requirements, and we are also utilizing noise buffering tech for, for our drive-through. Design has to minimize environmental impact. There are, as listed in the staff report, there are no significant environmental issues associated with the petition. And development patterns. The amendment to the pod of the PUD will contribute and support the established uses and pattern of development of the area, as listed in the report. Adequate public facilities. We meet all levels of concurrency, including traffic. And change conditions or circumstances. This is the, this is the site, and you can see that, that it is currently under development. This is a reflection of what was approved a few years ago. Again, we're missing the building here, which is currently erected. But you can see that this was always intended for a commercial development, and we are complying with all requirements of the ULDC, as well as our conditions of approval for, for the development of the center. In working with the neighbors, we do have letters or emails, I guess, of support that were sent to you over the last couple of weeks in regards to the two folks that take up the majority of the property line along our eastern perimeter. And again, we do have a letter of support from Cobra. Although we have been working also with, with the neighbors, and there's several things that we have agreed to over these 90 days, again, I don't think it's everything that they want to see, but it's substantial in regards to what they have requested. And I want to read it into the record that it is our intent to, to utilize these as, as part of our, our development program. Again, we have hours of operation, which is an existing condition of approval. We have agreed to limit outdoor dining to the north, south, or no outdoor dining on the north, south, or east facades of the building, meaning the outdoor dining will all face State Road 7. No audio/video or outside bar area within these outdoor dining areas. These, these dining areas are about 300 square feet. You're going to fit a couple of tables and chairs. Just wanted to make sure we're not having any concerts out there or anything else like that during the hours. Again, we, we have now most modern drive-throughs utilize it. We, we, you know, we, we just wanted to put it in the record, we will utilize audio-voice control technology for the drive-through to limit the, the ambient noise coming from, from the point of order. We have agreed to work with the community in regards to signs which will deter folks from utilizing the open spaces or driving through their community. They are public roads, and so you can drive through, and so we want to make sure that, that we can do what we can in regards to limiting any action of any folks, whether users, users of the commercial plaza or otherwise, from, from going any farther east than, than they have to. We understand that those must be permitted by Palm Beach County, and, but we're happy to work with the community in regards to developing a sign that, that can ultimately be permitted by, by the county. We have agreed to additional fill and trench drainage for the properties abutting the project to the east to fix some of the historical drainage problems that have occurred on those lots. We have limited the project signage to one on Armon and one on State Road 7. That is an existing condition of approval, which will go forward. We, we agreed to limit the size of the conditional use restaurant to what is approved today, and an existing condition of approval to fund the traffic light, as well as to work with the community as quickly as possible to lobby for, for the approval, the warrant and approval of that light. Lastly, we have talked to Melrose. Because those roads are public, there has been concerns with them in regards to even existing security problems within their parks and open space areas, and we're, we're willing to continue to, to work with them in regards to, to helping find ways to, to mitigate that. Again, we have Cobra recommendation of approval. We have staff recommendation of approval with conditions. We have zoning commission recommendation 9 0 to approve, and we have self-imposed conditions that, that I just read. We are willing and able to continue to, to work with the neighbors as this, as this project continues to be developed. With that, the project meets all ULDC criteria for approval, and we respectfully request your, your approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brophy.
Just to clarify for the record, those conditions which are not already existing conditions are all private agreements and are not going to be incorporated into the development order, right? Okay.
We, yeah, we have submitted these. I think they're on record with, with the county. And, and those that could be included as conditions of approval are within the staff report. Anything else will be part of a, a private agreement, but we wanted to put them on the record here so the board was aware.
All right. Very good. Mr. Brophy, before I take comments from my colleagues and we go to public comment, obviously, the speed bump on this has been the drive-in. What is the impact on traffic by having the drive-in? Do you have any studies that would let us know what additional traffic is being generated by the drive-in?
We, we do. We had to do a new traffic study that outlined the impacts. Dr. Ortega? Thank you. Yeah. We have an engineer to actually speak to.
Thank you.
Good morning for the record. Juan Ortega, traffic engineer for the project. We did the analysis for the drive-through and the analysis before, and the analysis insignificant to State Road 7 is less than 1%. It's about, I think, 70 trips total. But again, it gets, we put 45% northbound, 45% southbound, and 10% from the community because they're public roads, even though we think that most of the people are going to come from south to, to this project. So it's insignificant, and it was approved by county staff.
Okay. Mr. Brophy, I don't have a copy of the Cobra letter. Can you just get us a copy so that we can incorporate it into the record?
Yes, we can. Sure.
Very good. Okay. Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff, with regards to the Cobra letter, did it speak to the drive-through?
It was specific to the drive-through.
And it, and it supported the drive-through?
It did, yes.
Thank you.
To staff, is there a way to put on the main road a no-standing sign so if that queue, for some reason, wasn't large enough with the 30 cars that they can absorb into the lot, that there wouldn't be a possibility of them sitting on the road waiting to get into the, the shopping center?
Commissioner, we did a survey of existing, five existing Dunkin' Donuts in the last month, and we counted how long is the queue. And the longest queue we found for proposed, for the size of this proposed Dunkin' Donut was like 10 vehicles. And as Jeff said, this site can hold about 25 vehicles within the site.
These are 30, but okay.
Right. So we don't expect that it will get, you know, the queue will get out of the site and go onto the road. We don't expect. I mean, they have plenty of space to accommodate the expected queue from the drive-through.
And to reiterate, staff is, is satisfied not only that they have the eight that they need as far as code, but between 25 and 30 total between the way this is configured.
Yeah, if needed, be, that, that can be accommodated within the site.
Very good. Okay. Commissioner Sacks, I'll take your comment, and then we'll do disclosures.
Thank you, Mayor. To the staff, are there other drive-through Dunkin' Donuts or Starbucks in the area of 441 on this, on this, this route?
I believe Mr. Brophy made a presentation that includes.
There, yes. There, there is a, there's a drive-through located at Hypoluxo and Lyons, just up the road on the northeast corner. And there is also one at Lantana and 441. So directly up Lantana, about a mile or two, there's, there's also an additional Dunkin' Donuts there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Let's get our disclosures out of the way. And Commissioner Sacks, I'll start with you. That's item 13.
Mayor, on item number 13, Melrose, verbal communications, meetings with Brent and Monica Benedict, Jeff Brophy, Scott Backman, and my staff spoke through phone calls from the residents, and I receive and file emails and correspondence on the issue.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. On item 13, Melrose PUD commercial, I've had verbal communication with Jeff Brophy, Gerard Purser, Maggie Martin, and Scott Backman, and I've received correspondence. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mayor. On item 13, Melrose MUPD commercial, I met or spoke with Jeff Brophy, Jared Purser, and Scott Backman, and received correspondence.
Very good. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. On item number 13, I had verbal communications with Jeff Brophy, Jared Purser, and Scott Backman, and received emails, correspondence.
Very good. Commissioner Marino?
Thank you, Mayor. I have received emails and petitions from the residents, and I met with Jeff Brophy and Scott Backman.
Thank you. Commissioner McKinley?
My office received written communication, and my staff and I spoke with Jeff Brophy, Gerard Parod, and Scott Backman.
Very good. My disclosure on item 13, Melrose PUD, is I've spoken with Jeff Brophy, Jared Purser, Scott Backman, and I've met personally with Mike Boxman, and I have multiple emails, correspondence, which are a matter of public record. Okay, we're going to take public comments now. I have about 12. Does staff want to make any comments at this point?
The, you know, staff has, recommends approval of this application. We did review the conditions that were proposed, and as Jeff said, the ones that we felt that were appropriate to be included in a resolution, we included. And those that we believe are more appropriate, subject to private agreement, are subject to private agreement.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Kerner, would you do the honors?
Thank you, Mayor. As you pointed out, we have about 40 minutes of public comment. We'll start with William Domski to the microphone to my right, and your left, and then Michael Goldstein?
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to make mention that I believe it is going to serve as an amenity to the community and the surrounding neighborhoods. There are a lack of services directly serving the community behind and the further development going on in the, let's call it 14-mile radius. This brings needed services and will help garner a further sense of community.
Thank you very much for your brevity and your comments.
Thank you.
Following Michael Goldstein, we'll have Hector Echon.
Ms. Goldstein?
Yes, I was opposed to the drive-through basically because of the way the traffic flow is and the way the drive-through is at the end of the, the building, and then people have to come back to the same point. It seems like even though there's two entries to the side, it's as close as being one, and there should be a direct bridge across the 441, or what they were proposing, expanding the existing bridge to, to accommodate more traffic. And I was also concerned about, you know, there's no, they don't show where services for, for restaurants are, like garbage dumpsters, like septic tank grease traps, things like that, that also go on with the restaurant. So, and the noise involved in that. I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much for your comments, sir.
Following Hector, we'll have Glenn Holcomb.
Good morning. My name is Hector Lechon. I am the current president of the homeowners association of Melrose Park. From the moment that we saw that the development has started, most of our residents were excited to have the project. It has a mix of restaurants, medical offices, et cetera. And the original plan that called for restaurants at the, at one end and at another was a plan that we could get behind because it didn't have a drive-through. We always see ourselves, and still do, as one of the main patrons of the center. There is absolutely no reason why Melrose residents will not go to any other dentist, chiropractor, restaurant, pizza place, or whatever it might be in that plaza. And as a matter of fact, I would expect that many times you would drive by and you would see a lot of our residents golf carts, you know, patronizing this, this establishments. However, there was a change done that they required, they asked for a, for a conversion to a drive-through. And that was a little more problematic for us. And I know that you have a number of studies and this and that, but this center is a little different from the ones on 441 on Lantana and the one on Hypoluxo and Lyons. Number one, we are a community that, that has 130 residents, that has a pass-through street. It's a public street, the one that is Armon that turns into Talway, that you see there. Armon turns into Talway, goes all the way to Lyons. So we wanted, you know, more traffic control because we think that the increase in traffic is not going to be insignificant for us. Okay? Yes, maybe it's insignificant for the people rolling by 441, but for us who live here, it's going to be a lot more. Okay? So we asked the possibility to open up a bridge at the north of the site. Okay? So, so that the people that the light can basically go in and out, but also have an egress point on a bridge that was north of the drive-through so that people that have their food could get out easier and not congest Armon for the residents. Okay? We, the, the, the Melrose community is 130 residents, but also north of that, you see that right there is Verona, and they are about 300 homes. So you're looking at a sizable number of people and that trying to get in and out of one street, which is Armon, if they want to go to 441. So we do think there's going to be a lot of traffic for that. Now, I know that the developer has had a lot of willingness to work with us, and there's a lot of, a lot of conditions that have been changed on the, on the project, that he introduced some of them today. You know, Jeff mentioned them. But we're still not in agreement as far as the existence of a bridge and/or an enlargement of any other possible way to make sure that the inside, in and out of this particular drive-through is something that does not have is something that does not have a huge impact for us. So I'd like you to consider that, if possible, the, we could have the county perhaps, I don't know if the county has funding to allow for a bridge at the north end, or if the county has any objection to having an exit bridge, kind of like what Faith Farm does in the south, like a mile south, Faith Farm has a bridge over there, they enlarged.
I'm going to have to cut you off, but we understand what you're asking for as far as, again, an egress to 441 from the north, I guess, northwest corner of the lot there.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Holcomb, and then we'll have Tom DeBucci.
Mr. Holcomb, you are recognized.
Glenn Holcomb, I'm a resident of Melrose Park for 25 years. I've lived there when it was two lanes on 441, up and back. As time has passed, you can see the development has increased, a lot has changed. We're not, as residents, we're not against the development, but however, the traffic. And on 441, a lot of traffic goes up and down there now with the amount of lanes that are there. Because of that, a drive-through restaurant will affect our in and out. A red light will help, but it still is going to be, you talk about stacking, stacking can only be within that facility, but when they come outside of the facility on Armon, then that red light is going to have traffic too. When we're trying to get out of our development, then that's going to be a problem, and that's what we see. In the back of the restaurant, you have residents that are very, very close. They sit some yards away from that restaurant. You say it's a Dunkin' Donuts, it may be a Starbucks, it may be a Chick-fil-A one day. And you think about Chick-fil-A, trying to get in and out of your property. That's what we have to consider as residents. Number three, we did discuss a bridge, developers didn't want to consider a bridge, a separate bridge. That's what we think would be ideal. A separate bridge would make it better for them, better for us. That's my comments. Thank you. I oppose any changes to the current plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holcomb. Following Tom DeBucci, we will have Justin Hanlon.
Good morning. My name is Tom DeBucci. I have lived and worked in the Ag Reserve for the last 30 years, and I'll talk about that in just a moment. I first wanted to thank each and every one of you for your care, your concern, and your commitment to the residents of Palm Beach County. Your hard work and efforts do not go unnoticed, and they are greatly appreciated. I've worked in the Ag Reserve as a real estate broker. I've done over a half a billion dollars in sales. I currently have over $50 million worth of real estate for sale. I've sold land as little as one acre. I've sold land in excess of 100 acres. I sold homes as little as 2,000 square feet. I sold homes in excess of 15,000 square feet. I sold land to farmers, and I sold land for farmers. I sold land to landscapers, and because of what's going on right now, I'm selling land for landscapers. I've worked with developers over the years that have taken agricultural land and have changed the zoning to commercial, industrial, multifamily, and residential. I tell you that to let you know that I'm very familiar with the rules, the regulations of what has gone on in the Ag Reserve for the past 30 years. I'm aware of the things that are currently going on, and I'm aware of some of the things that will be brought before you in the near future. I do want to say I know the developer. I do not represent him. I did not sell him the property, nor am I leasing the property out for him. I am a resident in the Ag Reserve who drives from Clintmore Road to Lantana on an ongoing and regular basis. That is the width of the Ag Reserve, which is approximately 14 miles. I travel that route sometimes three, four, five times a day. There is nowhere to pull off that has a drive-through. There's only two places that you could stop if you wanted to get a cup of coffee or a snack, which is the Shell Station on Boynton Beach Boulevard and the Walwal on Atlantic. Recently, I went into Atlantic just to get a snack, and it took me almost 15 minutes to get back on the road. So you have about 30,000 people that travel from Clintmore to Lantana Road with nowhere with a drive-through. So based on this being commercial property, that there are no drive-throughs that are in this route, it dramatically helps the people of Palm Beach County. I am in favor of allowing for a drive-through on the site. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Mayor, may I just pose a question?
I'm an absolute answer, I didn't see your light.
Thank you. And I don't need the question answered at this, right at this moment, but to Mr. Holcomb's comments, and I'm not talking about this site specifically, but I'm talking about the general concept. If you have a Dunkin' Donuts, and then you have a Dunkin' Donuts with a drive-through window, what I'm interested to know is, generally speaking, what is the increase in trips per day or traffic to that standalone, not with all the other commercial in this, but just a drive-through or without a drive-through? Are there facts or there figures about how much increase in traffic the window actually produces? So when we're done with comments, or now?
Does staff have some sort of response to that, or does the petitioner have anything that they'd like to add?
There are two different rates for those two different land uses that you just mentioned, that one with drive-through, the other one without drive-through. I'm just looking that up right now.
Sure, thank you.
All right. We'll wait on the petitioner.
Following Mr. Hanlon, we'll have Paul Watts. Justin Hanlon.
Three minutes?
Good morning. My name is Justin Hanlon. I live at 9895 Cowan Court, and have been at Melrose Park resident homeowner for over 34 years. My property is behind and backed up to the Melrose Shop development. We're affected more than anyone else in the entire area in having the most property connected and backed up to it. We have personally spoken to Mike Boxman, developer, several times, and he has addressed all of my concerns, and I have no issues and in full support of the drive-through.
Thank you very much. Is that your house there, that blue one that's adjacent to the subject lot there?
See the T? That's my property on the, just to the right of the T where it says "subject."
Okay, very good. Thank you for your comments.
All right, following Paul Watts, we'll have Lance Foreman.
Hi, guys. Thanks for hearing me. Don't really want to repeat what everybody else just said, but somebody not being able to get a cup of coffee on their way to and from wherever they're going is a pretty thin argument for the amount of inconvenience that would be put on the people that actually live there. Because I don't, you know, whatever study you want to look at, just sit out front of a Dunkin' Donuts and look at how much traffic goes in and out of the entrance is what we would have to deal with. I mean, you guys are all looking at cramming as much business or tax dollars into a little parcel of land as you can, and the real-world cost comes down on the people who are going to live behind it. You guys know what a restaurant dumpster smells like in the middle of the summer? And to be honest with you, I know there's a lot of people that are trying to get different things out of this, bridges and lights, and the lights are going to come, because if you just look at all the yellow and white rezoning signs up and down 441, we're going to be pretty overcrowded pretty soon. It's going to look like Dayton-Broward County. There's going to be lights eventually. The bridge, I'm sure this guy doesn't want to spend a bunch of money to put a bridge on, so it's pretty simple. This guy's gotten a lot of changes made to his little plan, so just tell him no to the drive-through, and that'll solve a lot of the problems. It'll be less traffic on us because the reality is, if you have businesses where people have to park their car, get out and go inside, there's not going to be as much traffic as a business that people can just drive in and out of all day long. It's really simple. Just tell them no. You've told them yes to a lot of other things, apparently. So my kids pointed out to me on the way back from when we came to this last meeting, the first meeting, actually, that there's already a drive-through window at the end of this building. So apparently, they built this assuming they probably wouldn't have this much friction from the community, and they probably get a lot of yes. So just tell them this one no. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
All right, following Lance Foreman, we'll have Patricia Trau.
Mr. Foreman, three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning. My name's Lance Foreman. As last time I was here, the objection I have is to the drive-through not--
Just get a little closer to the microphone.
Can you hear me better now?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. My name's Lance Foreman. As noted last time, my objection is to the drive-through, not the commercial community itself, but just the drive-through aspect. That's the only objection I have. It's because of the traffic and economic issues that it will have on our community and the neighboring community of Verona. We're very unique in the sense that we have, share, all share this Armon road as an access road to get in and out, and two communities with a, with a commercial center, with a drive-through, all sharing this one road. That's very unique. We looked around, we cannot find other examples of that in our given area. So approving this would be very unique, and we think it would create traffic issues and economic issues for us when we try to sell our homes and also maintain property values for having ingress, egress, access, and enjoyment of the property. Okay? We believe a bridge would address this issue. Okay? It would give them another entrance straight on the 441, ingress, egress, address this traffic issue. Now, they mentioned the traffic studies and so forth, which we appreciate, but the important issue here is, is not on to 441, it's on Armon. Once you come out of there, and if there's a light, and even if the light, the traffic backing onto it and then turning onto 441, we see that backing up, and that's going to create the traffic issue for us. Okay? The PUD was approved, yes, in the 1990s, I understand. It didn't have any issue, any, excuse me, addressing this. Perhaps they didn't contemplate it and think that it should be allowed. So we're asking that it be denied now. Now, we're open to reasonableness about the bridge option, about access issues and so forth, but we think that it needs to be addressed to preserve our property values and address the traffic issues. Now, previously, there was a petition submitted, I believe it was a 510 signatures on the petition. So there's many people who feel this way about the bridge. I think if the bridge issue is addressed, or the access issue is addressed, a lot of these objections would go away. And that's what I have to say at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Could you just clarify, those 510 signatures, where did they come from?
Our community and the neighboring community just to the north of us, Verona, it's, if you follow the road around, Armon Place, keep following it up, you see Cowan Court, continue further north on Cowan Court, that whole community up there. So the signatures come from both our community in Melrose and throughout there in Verona up there.
Very good. Thank you for your assistance.
Ms. Trau, and then we'll have Anthony Trau.
Okay, good morning. My name is Patricia Trau, and I live actually on Melrose Park. I was anticipating that most of my concerns regarding the drive-through would have been addressed since the last postponement, but sadly, not all. My first and biggest concern still exists in the anticipated increase in traffic at the 441 Armon intersection and the need for traffic control there. I believe a light at the intersection and a north egress bridge would have eased my concerns. But if either or, I would support a light. We will still have the increase in traffic, but it will keep moving and moving safely. A bridge would help by taking some of the northbound traffic and drive-through traffic exiting the plaza. We will be sharing our access and egress to the 441 with the applicant. A study along the 441 for approximately 35 miles showed that no community at all shared their access and egress with any commercial retail parks. It was mentioned by Mr. Brophy, the Hypoluxo and Lyons, as an example where drive-throughs are sharing egress, outgress with a drive-through. But I know that one very well, and there is at least five exits to go to that. There'll be one on the Armon. Without the light or a bridge and with a drive-through approval, would come numerous issues, traffic, privacy, security, and an increase in traffic through Talway Circle to Lyons Road. We know we're public, but we're still very narrow. And there is also a school bus route with stops down from the plaza and Talway Circle. And the safety of our children is paramount to me. The trip generation that I was able to see dated December the 3rd, it did state that anticipated daily trips was something 586. So I'm unsure whether there's been a study done afterwards. Our community is a hidden gem within our county. It's very quiet, it's very rural, but we are expected to sustain a popular drive-through restaurants with bar-type restaurants. And I thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Staff, what kind of stacking is there for that left turn into the subject site?
Left turn on Armon Place to going into the site?
Yeah.
Yeah, they have, I think, let me measure that. It will be about 100, 100 feet.
Which would be what, five, three, four?
Yeah, four, five cars, four cars.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mayor. We have Anthony Trau, who does not wish to speak, but states no traffic lights, no bridge, no drive-through. Paul, sorry, Brent Benedict will be our next speaker in opposition.
Mr. Benedict?
Following Mr. Benedict, we will have our final speaker, Monica Benedict, unless I missed anybody.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak. I was here about three months ago. I'm still opposed to the drive-through. I'm going to mention similar things that everybody else has mentioned. Jeff, Mr. Brophy used the appropriate word, funneling. So if you look at the site, they're funneling when people leave the drive-through. Everything is being funneled to Armon Place. If you look at other drive-throughs or other commercial developments on 441, there's nothing similar where it's funneled all to one road that's shared with residential communities. So basically, the drive-through is going to increase the number of people visiting this site. They're going to come out onto Armon, where there's no traffic light, and 441, you guys know that the traffic is significantly increased. It's harder to get out right now, even without this, the development open. So once this opens with the drive-through, basically to get out of our community, we're going to be waiting, and it's, that's where the stacking may happen. It's not within the commercial development. I don't disagree that they have enough stacking capability within for people going to the drive-through. It's when they get out of the drive-through. People mentioned the bridge. If there was a bridge on the north end, people can go through the drive-through and come out that way rather than going on the road that we share. So that's the main concern that I still have, that I don't think has been addressed. There's also some noise concerns. They want to increase the size of outside dining, so that, again, it's very close to the residents, and there's a potential for increased noise. And that's two things that really could reduce the property values that we have. Traffic and noise both reduces property value, so that is our major concerns with this project. The applicant also mentions that the design minimizes adverse impact to the adjacent areas. That's the applicant's view on this. I think you should look at the residents, the people that live there. I think you've seen many emails, you've seen that there's a petition with over 500 signatures. Those are the people from the area, the people from Melrose Park, the people from Verona Lakes. They have made that clear, that they do not want the drive-through. And I think you need to remember that. Even if they're not here today, this has been postponed multiple times, but I don't think it's significantly changed from previously, the people's concern with this proposal. And I just want to thank you guys, thank you Commissioners, for, again, allowing us to voice our concerns and considering the impact of the proposal to the neighboring communities. I think you really need to consider the people that live there. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Hello, Monica Benedict. I live in Melrose Park. They didn't say it, but my property, back to the building, okay? They cut me off. And you know why? Because they said they want a letter, a letter from me supporting them, enable for them to give me thanks to improve my property. And I said no, okay? Because this-- Because this is not about Monica and improving Monica's house. This is about a neighbor that's screaming through 500 signatures, more, over 500 signatures, for this house to protect us from this project. It's going to harm us, it's going to harm here. I imagine 10 o'clock, people are getting out of the bar drunk, and I have to hear their screaming or whatever they do. This is my home, you know? They don't make one acre property anymore. They only make affordable houses that we cannot even afford, okay? And this is a hidden gem, like my friend said, we wanted to protect. And that, yes, I'm not going to give a special letter for them, agree with them, because they never consider us in their project. The only way that we got to them is because they had to present it to you. And I come here to really like, say that these, these signatures echoing here. Those people have no hope. Do you know what they say? Those are giants. You have, they have power. You have no chance. Guess what? My friends sitting on the chair here, they have more power than the builder to do what's right, okay? Not just because you agree with something that was similar to our project. This is a hidden gem that's going to be smashed it because it's going to have a traffic issue, a noise issue. See the change of, the outside dining? It's a large patio for a bar inside of our house. Imagine that six months from now, they can change the permit from 10 o'clock to 3:00, and nobody's going to stop them from doing that because it's the law, they're in compliance. And I'm not going to be able to sleep because the law is there. So let's stop this drive-through here, stop this changing of square foot for the outside dining because, okay, why don't you just put no outdoors dining? Because then the noise would be contained. If it was a office building, that would be nice because 6:00, everybody goes home and we are able to have our quiet night in our one acre property that we can listen to the nature, that we can sit outside and just say, wow, I'm so lucky to have this property. But now, everybody's in fear, in fear. Thank you for listening to us, and I am thankful.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's the end of our public comments. Before I take comments from our attorney and Commissioner Kerner, do we have an answer to Commissioner Kerner's question?
Yes, Commissioner, with a drive-through, the trips will increase by about 20% more.
20% equals what?
More, 20% as compared to without a drive-through. 20% more traffic.
Real numbers.
Correct.
So if, if it was just a Dunkin' Donuts, taking out all the other traffic in that shopping center, if there was 100 trips a day for the Dunkin' Donuts, it would be 120 with the drive-through?
With the drive-through, correct.
Okay. And then I guess, oh, sorry, I'd love to hear from the counsel.
I just, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just say that this would be the appropriate time if the applicant had any responses to the public.
Okay, very good.
And if the applicant's going to respond, I want to pose a hypothetical. Thank you, Mayor. By asking for the drive-through, Jeff, I think you're asking for an entitlement, basically. It's going to increase the amount of commerce that can occur reasonably on this parcel. And by extension, the value of the land is going up, and the attractive nature of, from a tenant will go up, the interest will go up if there's a drive-through. So on one hand, you're asking for something that will increase the value of the property. On the other hand, they're asking for an investment in their community by adding an egress bridge. Tell me, in your comments and responses, walk us through why that's not appropriate from your perspective.
Well, one, one of the issues that we've talked about is, is right now, in order to get the light at the intersection, it has to be warranted. And in order to do that, you need the traffic there. Should you have an egress bridge that funnels traffic? And the only ones that would use it would be the ones going northbound, because the ones going southbound are still going to use Armon. The ones going northbound would use the exit bridge. The issue is that we aren't going to have, the ability to warrant the light is already difficult. If we include an egress bridge, the ability to secure the light will be very, very difficult. And in addition to the, just the, in regards to the, I guess, the, the value of the property, the property was originally, again, approved for 53,000 square feet. And so we have, we have reduced that. That has actually helped from, based on the original approval, has helped with the traffic because we're down, again, about 26%, 14,000 square feet of what could be there. So there, there already has been a reduction in regards to the entitlement that, that came with the original approval.
Commissioner Kerner, I'm just going to give you a point of information. I spoke to Ramsey before. To put that bridge across would take FDOT approvals, would probably delay this about a year until they, they would act upon it and probably is about a multimillion dollar proposition.
Would, thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that information. Would, would the development and commerce necessarily have to stop if there was, you know, an aspirational desire to have a bridge in the future?
I'll look to staff for that.
Good morning. Scott Cantor, Land Development. I did want to add, though, because they have the ability to access two different roads, State Road 7 and Armon Place, our code requires access to the lower classified road. And so when the development was first created, they created the commercial pod with everything accessing the, the 80-foot right-of-way. So they would probably have to get a subdivision variance as well as FDOT approval for the connection to the road.
And I'm not really interested in an ingress point for the bridge. I think obviously Armon's the best route, but when you have a north-sided drive-through window and then a, a bridge to leave that property, I think that would be pretty efficient. Does that, if it was only for exiting, would that change your analysis?
So our current analysis has not included a bridge because that, you know, wasn't submitted as part of this approval. But, I mean, it's, it's something that, I mean, we would have to probably look at.
All right, well, I, I don't have any further questions.
Can you confirm the petitioner's remarks with respect to the potential of having a light there? If that bridge was taking some of that traffic off of that intersection, is there a chance then that they wouldn't warrant that light and people making that left turn would be going uncontrolled across the, the four lanes?
Yeah, correct. I think there would be less, less possibility of a signal if that happens.
So actually, we're creating more of a safety problem by
Correct.
The egress on a bridge potentially than having a light at the intersection of Armon and State Road 7?
Correct.
All right, very good. Do you want to follow up with any remarks on that, Mr. Brophy?
No, none on the light.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Sacks, you're recognized.
And this is for staff. Basically, what we have is we have a commercial entity inside of a housing development.
No.
Right? And do we know if and when FDOT will widen State Road 7? No.
I do not know.
No, we don't, right? If and when FDOT widens State Road 7, they may probably obviate the need for a bridge because of, I'm sure they'll take care of that canal or move it or something. So it would all be mute whether this, this site would have access to, or, you know, folks would have access from State Road 7 to the Dunkin' Donuts. My concern is this. A Dunkin' Donuts is really going to serve the folks who drive up and down State Road 7. We do need commercial places on State Road 7 because there's been, there's probably going to be more and more development. But what concerns me is that, is that we all looked at this as entering a private home, homeowners group for access for the public, public, to a commercial entity. Has this, did this enter into your analysis at all?
I just wanted to add that Armon and Talway are all county-maintained public roads.
I know, they're county-maintained, but it's, that's a, I mean, are there other commercial developments on Armon Place, or does that lead into a residential area?
Residential.
And do we know that we could actually put an intersection light on a state road?
Oh, my God. I need that.
Yes, if it meets the warrant.
If it reaches the warrants.
Correct.
Do we know if it, I love intersection lights. I need them. But, but I know they're very difficult to get. And even if they pay, still difficult to get. Do we have, you're the engineer, do we have any idea, or can you give us an idea as to whether, if we, you know, if the site is approved with the drive-through, if there would be enough warrants to provide for a FDOT approval of an intersection light?
A study actually needs to be done based on the real traffic when this plaza is built. I cannot, you know, anticipate whether there will be a light or not.
Mr. Brophy, can you amplify on that?
The real traffic is in place.
Let me, let's see if the petitioner can amplify.
Again, for the record, Juan Ortega, traffic engineer for the project. The warrants from DOT require to have X number of trips. Right now, we have about 70 people, 7-0, making a left out during the peak hour, around 70 people. When you add the numbers from the center, you will get to that magic number when DOT starts paying attention, which is about 100. So you will need, give and take, 100 trips, making a left on Armon, southbound to State Road 7, for the warrants to be met. You have different warrants, you have one hour, four hours, eight hours. The very first one is the one-hour warrant, which requires 100 trips. The big difference between the county and DOT, and the reason why we have this limbo with, or whether or not the light is, is met, is that based on our county standards, we want the traffic to be warranted on the field. If it's warranted on the field, the county will build it or the developer will build it. With DOT, it's, it's a little more complicated, as you pointed out, because of the way they look at signal warrants. So the answer is, the moment you add 30 more left outs from the shopping center or from Armon Place or from the neighborhood, then the warrants will start to be met. And therefore, that's why staff has condition of approval for the applicant to pay for that light and not the county.
Commissioner Sacks, would you allow me to ask him a question? We've heard some discussion about the potential of a bridge. We're also hearing that you're just about triggering the, the warrant based upon your anticipated traffic that's going to be generated by the entire shopping center. If that bridge was constructed, is it your opinion that the warrants would no longer apply and that we would not be able to have FDOT approve a light at that intersection now?
If the bridge is built, it's extremely unlikely that the signal will be warranted because it will be easier for people going to the shopping center to make a right out and make a U-turn, to go southbound, which may create a safety issue because of the northbound traffic being so heavy on State Road 7. It will be safer for the people that are going to this shopping center to continue southbound within the shopping center, make a right, wait for the light, and then go south.
Understood. All right. Mr. Brophy, can you just clarify? We keep on saying Dunkin' Donuts. Is there a lease or do you have any commitment from Dunkin' Donuts or anybody for that particular parcel?
There is, yes. For, for the 18, for, for the conditional use that's before you today, yes, there, there is a lease for, for Dunkin' Donuts.
Very good. Commissioner Marino, you're recognized.
Thank you. Jeff Duncan Way. Or Mr. Ortega. Odd question, but it might help. What is the transaction time at a, the average transaction time at a Dunkin' Donuts? Because the average transaction time will then dictate how many cars will be stacking.
I don't have an answer on that, but I do have a lot of analysis that we have done in the past. If you may remember, in Wellington, where Dunkin' Donuts went on Forest Hill, they had the longest queue ever in the history of the county. And the reason was the service time was too long. So based on the analysis that the traffic division did, you see that the longest queue is 10 cars. So I would say it's probably 90 seconds, give and take, based on the field data that was recently connected by.
I'm sorry, did you say nine seconds?
90.
90, see, thank you. Nine and 90 are quite a big difference.
But typically, the problems.
Okay, so minute, okay, so minute and a half. So you get your Dunkin' Donuts, you now, now come to the area where the traffic light is. What I'm getting at is, it doesn't seem like you'll have a lot of stacking to get out, you're going to have more stacking to get in.
Correct.
So what would be the average time that a light takes to change? Because that's another issue. That's, that would be the cars stacking and making, making the light. Maybe you have to wait for more than one traffic light. Now you're really affecting traffic. So am I explaining what I'm asking, the question that I'm asking for in answer?
Yes, but the answer is, it depends because State Road 7 is on a coordinated signal timing. So my guess is, based on other projects that I have done in State Road 7, you're looking at between 140 and 160 seconds for a full signal to get to you. So you may wait.
So you're looking at two car, two cars to clear the tra, two cars to clear the window would be the time for one traffic light?
About two cars, yes. That's what, that's what, that was, that's what we get.
That two cars to clear sounds a lot better than 10 cars stacking.
Well, the 10-car stacking that we were mentioning is the amount of cars that we can have waiting for. So the, the window, the drive-through window, will regulate the amount of traffic that gets to a signal at the same time. And when we were looking at these numbers and we were looking at the analysis, we look at the amount of cars that can be stacked there today without a traffic signal. Yes, the traffic can be handled by the left turn lane that is being, not the left turn lane, the pavement markings. We have enough stacking to accommodate it. But, again.
I'm looking at the cars, once they've gotten there, once they've gone through the drive-through and they're exiting, how long? So basically, it's two cars per traffic light.
Correct. Per cycle, yes, give and take.
Thank you.
Are you designing this so that there would be a left turn lane for people going out of Armon so that traffic that wants to go north on State Road 7 would be able to make a right on red?
There is an, they can make a right, a right on red because there's an existing westbound left into State Road 7.
So that the traffic that is stacking?
Can make a right out, yes.
Let's say the two cars that are, have come out of the Dunkin' Donuts could be sitting there and the traffic that wants to go north would not be stopped?
Absolutely. And I will assume that out of those two cars, one is going to make a left, the one is going to make a right.
Well, I'm asking you, and that's why I'm asking you.
Yes.
Are there two lanes there? One for someone who wants to make a right on red and one is going to sit and wait for the next cycle of the left turn lane?
Correct.
Okay. That, that clarifies that for me. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, thank you. Mr., and I don't know if this is for staff or Mr. Ortega, did you, have you all looked, I mean, based on what the models say, is this going to generate enough traffic to satisfy the warrants for the light?
Yes. Most likely, yes. Based on the numbers that we have, based on the county trip generation rates, based on what we know in the market, based on the market analysis, based on where we think the customers are going to come from, I think the light is going to be warranted.
And how long will it take for, to prove that, in fact, that that exists?
So the way it works is, right now, we have a condition of approval. If I remember correctly, it's 24 months, the county will hold the money after the developer gets the last CO. There's nobody stopping us or the county or anybody to do a signal warrant analysis today to see if it's warranted. If the light is warranted today, the process can start right away because the permits have to go through DOT. The county will maintain the sign, the signal, but all the permits and all the approvals will go through DOT as a separate process. So if it's warranted today, we will have to pay for it and we will have to build it.
So is, is there any way to, I mean, no, so nobody has studied the fact that this light may already be needed?
The signal warrant itself, no, because when we did the counts for the intersection, there were around 70 cars. So it was borderline at that point. So it has not been done. For the signal itself, for, to evaluate the, the intersection, as it works today, we did the counts, we did the analysis, we did the drive-through, without the drive-through. counts, we did the analysis, we did the drive-through, without the drive-through, and all the different scenarios.
So, so is it your, your testimony here today that, based on, based on the existing traffic that you've measured, and based on the modeling that you all have done on, on developing this site, that it's going to generate enough traffic to warrant a traffic light?
It is my professional opinion that once the site is fully developed, a signal will likely be warranted.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kerner?
Sir, sir. Does that analysis include the Class A conditional use?
Yes, as part of our, as part of the, my testimony that I'm giving today is strictly based on the type one drive-through restaurant as a conditional use for the site, yes.
Okay. And if that's removed, does your opinion change?
It will, I don't know, because I have, we haven't looked at those numbers. I, we didn't look at those numbers without the drive-through, because our request, our traffic analysis and traffic studies were based on the drive-through, or the type one restaurant.
But even without the development and commercial activity that's projected to be in the future, once this is built, it was still already very close to meeting the traffic warrants?
It will meet, so like I was saying there, DOT and the county, and everybody else, looks at three different warrants. Peak hour, which is one hour, four hours, and eight hours, consecutive hours. So the way it is today, without the shopping center, it's extremely unlikely that it will be met. There's no question about that. Once you start adding these buildings, then it will be met. And especially if you have the type one restaurant, like, like Quasi was saying, it's 20% increase on that. It is 5% of the overall building, but it's 20% increase in traffic.
Got it, thank you.
All right. So we have, I think we are pretty well talked out on this. We have before us a staff recommendation for approval, the request subject to the conditions of approval as indicated in Exhibits C1 and C2, which is found on page five of our backup. I'm looking for either a motion, or some more discussion on the, I have a, can you turn in your microphone?
Sorry, I make a motion that we approve.
All right. So I have a motion for Commissioner Moreno to adopt the resolution approving the development order amending to modify the site plan and master plan, add square footage, and uses, delete the condition of approval, subject to the condition of approval as indicated in Exhibit C1, and a concurrent, a concurrent, easy for me to say, to, a motion to adopt the resolution of a Class A conditional use to allow a type one restaurant with drive-through subject to conditions of approval as indicated in C2. Do I have a second?
I have a second by Commissioner McKinley. We can continue our debate. Commissioner Sacks, I'm sure you have something to say at this point.
No, I think we just go forward for a vote.
Okay, very good. Let's call for a vote, and I have a feeling this might be a split vote, so let's go ahead and do a roll call.
Commissioner Bernard? Commissioner Kerner?
No.
Was, can you repeat that?
No.
Commissioner?
No is my vote, not no that I won't repeat it.
He doesn't want to go to Dunkin' Donuts.
Commissioner Moreno?
Yes.
Commissioner McKinley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
No.
Vice Mayor Weiss?
Yes.
Mayor Winroth?
Yes.
So I have five I and two N.
Five to two, it passes. Thank you very much, and to the residents, we did hear you, we understand your concerns, but I think that the, the light that's going to go in there is going to address most of your concerns, and really, the stacking, I'm, really don't think is going to be a, a factor in your lives. Thank you very much, everybody. All right, you know what? I think we should take a five-minute break, just to let everybody stretch their legs. Let's say we'll get back together five minutes to 12.
Thank you, Mayor. We.
Our meeting, and we are moving on to item 14. This is a ULDC revision, electronic messages and signs, regular agenda item. If we don't see a need for a presentation, I'll take a motion. I have a motion by Commissioner Kerner. Do I have a second? I have a second by the Vice Mayor. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, all opposed. Item 14 has been approved, seven to zero. Let's move. We have a permission to advertise. Item 15, revision, Westgate CRA overlay, land development permit extension, public hearing, agenda item. I have a motion by the Vice Mayor, second by Commissioner Moreno, seeing no further discussion. Commissioner Bernard, am I going too fast for you over there? All in favor, all opposed, show that it's approved, seven to zero. We're now going to move on to six, to number 16, but before that, we're going to recess as the Board of County Commissioners. We are going to convene as the Environmental Control Board. I know we look the same, but we're now a different board. We are now going to take up item 16, revision to the septic system authority and drinking water supply system, public hearing. Do I have a motion to approve? I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sacks, seconded by Commissioner Kerner, seeing no further discussion, all in favor, all opposed, show that it's approved, seven to zero. Moving right along, we have now recessed as the Environmental Control Board, we're going to reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. We're back. All right. Let me see. We are now on to item 17, Land Development Division Agenda Item. This is Forest Oaks Residential, and we will take a presentation. Is the petitioner here?
I'll, I'll give the presentation on this, on the abandonment.
Okay, very good.
And I can still say good morning, and I'm Scott Kanter, Director of the Land Development Division.
It's still morning for about another three seconds.
Okay. Item number 17, AB 61277, Forest Oaks Residential Drainage Easement Abandonment. So the site is located on the south side of Lake Worth Road.
Is your microphone on?
Let me get closer, then.
Okay, thank you.
So the, the site is located on the south side of Lake Worth Road, east of the Florida Turnpike, and it's located within the Forest Oaks Residential Development, within the golf course. So if you see, there's the area on the left-hand side, on the right-hand side, you'll see the five platted water management tracts, WMT 1 through 5. So the Lucerne Lakes Golf Course plat, which was recorded back in 2000, created water management tracts, and they gave Palm Beach County the right, but not the obligation, to maintain portions of the drainage system associated with county road drainage. What they also did is they created an easement over these water management tracts, that, and they dedicated it to a couple of the homeowner associations, Palm Beach County, Florida, and other individuals adjoining the water management tract areas. So the petitioner, which is the underlying property owner, Grillo Golf Management LLC, is, he has submitted the application to abandon the, the county's interest in said water management tracts that was created by the easements. We've seen this property before. Madamy Homes has received approval to construct 450 units within the redevelopment area. So what they will ultimately end up doing is reconfiguring the lakes and the drainage system into the new overall master stormwater system for the proposed development. So all utility, all review agencies and utility providers that, that we send, or that sign off on these abandonments have provided consent and have agreed to the abandonment. A little small, but we, there are standards in the Palm Beach County Abandonment Ordinance, I'm sorry. Essentially, it references various state statutes that govern the abandonment process that we follow. It gives the Board of County Commissioners, at your discretion, the ability to abandon and vacate said easements. There, one of the statutes does have a couple other standards that we have found, the, the application meets as well. The underlying property owner is petitioning the abandonment of the, of the easements, and then if you were to abandon the easements, it would have no impact on the ownership or right of convenient access for other owners within the subdivision. So, okay, before I get to that, so the, you know, the plat did create multiple easements. There were easements that benefit the Master Homeowners Association, which the developer's going to have to currently, or continue to work with, to abandon other interest. We are abandoning the county's interest in this water management system, or within those five water management tracts created by that plat. So the motion would be to, for staff to recommend adoption of the resolution banning any public interest in the drainage easements over, or across those five water management tracts.
So this has no impact on the concurrent easements, and that'll have to be settled between the developer and the homeowner associations?
Correct. The additional easements will have to be released directly through the private entities between the developer and the, whatever that other entity it is that has rights to the drainage.
Okay, very good. All right. Yes, Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mayor. And I know we, at some point, will do disclosures, but I wanted to just get a question answered before we get to public comment. I know today, we're not litigating the larger policy issues about golf course conversions, but during that process, I recall that there was comments made by both sides, I believe, that there was some ongoing litigation. I don't know how that's going to work out, but assuming, I'm assuming this project moves forward and gets developed. If for some reason it doesn't, how do we go back and get our interests in these easements?
That's a great question, and the easement language, or the plat language that created these easements, it's not something that's typical, and it's not something that we would put on plats today. So I'm, because the, the interest is strictly paper, I, I'm not sure that we would even need any interest in it, as long as the Masters Homeowner Association, people who actually utilize this drainage system, retain their rights.
Is there any risk of this item being premature in any way? Because it seems like this is a ministerial function of the board at this point. We're not weighing, you know, we're not delving into the substance of the issues in that community where, you're recommending that we do this, and I just want to know if it's, if it's at all premature?
For the application being abandoning the county's interest, I would say it's not premature. If, you know, if it did have county road drainage, and we did have an interest in it, it would, we would probably do it a little differently, and it would, we wouldn't, yeah, we would either have them, you know, construct the new system first, and make sure it's operational, and then abandon it, so we know our roads can continue to drain, or there's even processes where we work with the developers and create a new easement over the abandonment site, and hold it in escrow until the, the system is built, and then we would not record that easement. But in those scenarios, that's when we do have physical road drainage and a need for the drainage system to continue to operate.
And so that's looking at it from our interest as the government, and, and our assets there, but is it, the same question then, is it premature? Would there be any adverse effect to the people that live there? Is it premature in that sense? Because we also have to hold those interests in, in our thoughts, decision-making.
So, I mean, how the process works is, right now, we're, engineering is reviewing the, the new plat and the development plans that will create the new easements and the new, you know, stormwater management system under the land development permit. And, you know, the, the new, I'm just trying to think through this. So, I mean, they will have to continue working with the additional entities, like the Master Association, who current, who also has a benefit and interest in these easements. And I believe that's what they're going to be doing, is they will hold an easement in escrow. But it's, it's a good question.
This wouldn't prejudice anybody else's rights if we release our easement? It doesn't do anything to, you know, impact the homeowner association and their negotiations?
No, this is only abandoning the county's interest.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Scott. I don't have any further questions, but I'd love to hear what the attorneys.
Yeah, and before we get to our legal counsel, is there a way, or I'll ask our legal counsel, is there a way to put a reverter clause on here that would then immediately give us back our easements if this all burns down?
I was actually going to mention something like that, and I'll, I'll look to Liz to clarify if I say anything sounds off-base, but perhaps there's a way to delay the effectiveness of the, of the abandonment until such time as any replacement or needed easements are in place.
Scott?
We, I've seen it happen once, and there was a, during the abandonment application, the board wanted an additional easement to be recorded prior to us recording the abandonment resolution. So, and then, so the, you can't condition the actual abandonment like we do with zoning applications, but the last one was held like in minutes until whatever it is the board requested was satisfied.
Well, I, just kind of honestly spitballing here, but could you make the effective date of the resolution, you could award it in such a way that it doesn't become effective until such time as, you know, XYZ happens? And again, if, if I'm saying something off-base, please let me know.
I mean, I'd defer, or I'd probably talk to our legal counsel, Liz.
My understanding was that there, there's currently no, all the reviewing agencies reviewing, there's nothing that needs, there's no county interest in retaining anything.
Right, it meets, obviously, I mean, the application meets all the requirements of the ordinance, but that, yeah.
You don't foresee any potential for the county to need these easements in the future?
Correct.
All right. Let's do our disclosures. Commissioner Sacks, we'll take you first. This is on item 17.
Thank you, Mayor. On item number 17, Forest Oaks Residential, I've had verbal communications and a phone conference with Henry Handler and David Lindley.
Very good. Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item number 17, I've had no verbal communication, and I've received correspondence.
Very good. Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mayor. On item 17, I spoke with David Lindley and received correspondence.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. On item number 17, I had verbal communications with Mr. Henry Handler in my office, and I received email correspondence.
Very good. Commissioner Moreno?
Thank you, Mayor. I have had written communications from residents, and verbal communication, I spoke with Henry Handler, and all disclosures for today have been received and filed with the clerk.
Very good. Commissioner McKinley?
Yes, received written communication. My staff spoke with David Lindley from Kaufman and Wheeler.
Okay. And my disclosures on item 17, Fair Oaks Residential, I also had spoken with Mr. Handler, Mrs. Lindley, and I saw Mr. Plumbo out in the hall, so I'll add him to my disclosures. And I have various emails, which are a matter of public record. Okay, we have our disclosures out of the way, we have our presentation out of the way. Anybody want to make a motion? Or have more?
Comment?
You have something new for us?
I, I did, I just forgot to mention the contacts from the public, I just wanted to bring it up. We, we have received 33 now from the residents, and one in support, two asking questions, and 30 are opposed.
And Commissioner Kerner has a few cards in front of him, so why don't we have our resident input?
All right, very good. I'll start with Donna Maffeo, which she does not wish to speak, but she says, please give careful consideration to this request. The, the easements will, is, Donna, can you read this for me? It's, I don't think it's in support, it's, it's in opposition, it's, but it's too difficult to read. All right, our first speaker will be Evangeline Gonzalez, followed by Sarah Goodman.
And please come up to the microphone, and you will have three minutes to tell us your thoughts. And I'll ask you to give that microphone a yank down, so we can hear you clearly. Thank you.
Okay, before I begin, Angelique had to go to work. She wanted to read the letter that she had written to the, to your board. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, oh, and before you start my minutes up there, I'm supposed to be watching them, but I can't read and watch both, so I'm sure you'll let me know.
Oh, we'll let you know.
But I am also have been requested by the president of our HOA Association, Lucerne Lakes South, he was unable to be here today, but he has asked me to...
We will receive and file that, and...
Yes. So, do I get extra minutes? How does this work?
No, we're going to just take, you have gotten already an extra minute just having this conversation.
Well, but I haven't said anything yet.
But you have.
All right, okay, you guys, you're very funny, okay.
All right, your time starts right now.
Thank you. All right, this is, I am objecting to the petition to abandon any public interest in the drainage easements. My name is Sarah Janzak Goodman, and I live at 7271 Pine Forest Circle, Lake Worth. I have lived here for over 30 years. I am directly impacted by this development and have grave concerns regarding the abandonment of the easement by the county to a private developer at this time. I want to object to the petition on several grounds. One, I am concerned that we are proposing to abandon the drainage easements, excuse me, before any documents have been approved. The purchase and sale agreements have not been approved by the owners of the association, and in fact, the right of the then-president of the HOA South to sign any documents has been legally questioned as unauthorized by the bylaws. Without the approvals, the development cannot go forward. Knowing the uncertainty of the legal process, it is premature to abandon the easement. Two, and I already heard somebody up there mention that, if the county abandons the easement and if the plans are not approved, Grillo Golf Management will still be the owner of the easement. This will hamper any ability of you as the county protecting the public or me as a homeowner to make good decisions in the future. This will become a lever in any future conversations, and that is not appropriate. This is very premature in the process. Until all other issues are settled, there is no reason for the petitioner to relocate the easements, and I strongly voice my objection also upon the information from my attorney.
Thank you. Leave those letters with the...
I'm not done.
You're not done yet, okay. You have a million, minute and 10 seconds.
In addition, now, you've got to give me extra seconds. It has just come to my attention that the Lucerne Lakes Master Association voted to confirm and cooperate with Grillo and Matamie. This, and this agreement was signed by the Master Association President. This was never discussed or approved by a vote of the Lucerne Lakes Homeowners Association South Board of Directors, of which I am a member. Neither was it discussed with the board through any other means of communication. There are a number of anomalies that need to be cleared up prior to any consideration of this petition. The county commissioners are here to protect the people of Palm Beach County. They can only be done that, that can only be done by voting no. Now, I've got to read this really fast. I am the VP of the Lucerne Lakes Homeowners Association, and I am speaking on for the president. My name is Bob Upson. I am president of Lucerne Lakes South, formerly known as Lucerne Lakes Homeowners Association. Our association has granted easement rights in the Dedication's Plat Book 87, page 185. These easements are included in the petition being considered today. For us to release these private easement rights, a vote by our residents must be taken according to and in conformance with our articles of incorporation and bylaws. Therefore, I respectfully suggest a decision today by the Board of Commissioners to release the easements would be premature, and as such, I ask you to deny this petition until our residents' rights are resolved. Sincerely, Bob Upson, President.
And I gave you an extra 30 seconds, so you have plenty.
I know, you are wonderful, I love you forever.
Aw, you're very sweet.
And if you vote no, I will love you even more.
Okay, all right. All right, I just want to have staff, one more time, reconfirm, does the county have any interest in these easements in the future, whether or not this project proceeds?
No, I mean, there's interest by the plat.
You're equivocating.
No, 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 the interest is being abandoned by this application, but there's no need for it in the future.
So, there is no reason...
Correct.
... whether this goes forward or not, not to act on this today?
If, correct. The application, or if this, if the plat that recorded these easements came in today, we would not ask for these easements.
Okay. Commissioner Marino, you're recognized.
Thank you, and I just want to give a shout out to Sarah for being so feisty, and I hope you stay that way for a long time.
Thank you.
I bet you we're going to see her again.
I think so.
Commissioner Sacks?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. And I, again, I have a similar question to what the mayor had, and my concern is that if, are we, if we abandon these easements, are we doing anything premature as county government?
We do not believe so. We've received all sign-offs from all reviewing agencies stating that the, there is no need for this easement, the county has no physical, we're not utilizing the easements, so we do not believe so. It meets all the requirements of our abandonment ordinance.
So, that's our, the legal opinion of the county? So, that if, in fact, there isn't the development of this, so many townhouses, 450 townhouses, that would not, that would not be to the detriment to the homeowners of this Forest Hills?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor?
Let me see if I might, might be able to help everybody. Can you explain what the easement is, why and why it exists? Well, you don't have to explain why it exists. Can you just explain what the county's interest, what this easement is for, and why we, you know, potentially, what the uses would be for such an easement?
So, there are two rights that were created by the plat. The first one was to maintain...
Can you just explain in general what this easement is?
It's a drainage easement.
And what right does that, what right does that create?
Someone could construct drainage facilities within the easement.
So, what this does is this provides for the county to be able to put water into that drainage system?
Correct.
And at this point in time, and in the past, we've never had to utilize that because we don't have any roadways or any connection to our drainage system that would use this easement, and that's been in place for how many years?
Correct, 22.
So, and, but, and it doesn't extinguish anybody else's right?
Correct.
So, do you know who all the beneficiaries or who have rights to this easement besides the county?
So, yes. Created by the plat, it would be Lucerne Lakes Homeowners Association, Lucerne Lakes Master Homeowners Association, and any or, and/or any other association entity or individual which has a duly, which has a duty to maintain any lands adjoining the water management tract.
So, that, so it really is in the interest of everybody whose properties and so forth drain from that, from that development, that drain into these drainage canals and move the water through. So, by abandoning our interest in it, it, we don't, we've never had, we've never had a use for it, and there's no future thought to have a use to need that, or to be able to put water into that drainage system, but it allows for the HOAs and everybody else who's got an interest in it to be able to continue to use it and potentially as, you know, if they're being asked to abandon, to negotiate with whoever's asking for that easement to be abandoned.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor. I appreciate that clarification. Anybody else? You have another couple of comment cards?
We do, Mayor. Is, I'll call it Evangeline Gonzalez one more time, not here, and then our last speaker will be Lisa Reeve.
He had to go to work.
Okay, very good, thank you.
And then Lisa Rivas will be our final speaker.
All right, you've got the final word.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Lisa Rivas of Saw, Ewing, Arnstein, and Lear, and I'm here for the record of Lucerne Lakes Golf Colony Community Association, and to request the denial of the applicant's petition to release the drainage easements as premature. While it may not be premature for Palm Beach County, it is premature for the residents of Lucerne Lakes PUD, as we are discussing their current drainage system. The current petition seeks to vacate both the county and the public's interest in the platted drainage easements. The dedication of the platted easements vests rights in Lucerne Lakes Master Association, Lucerne Lakes Homeowners Association, and any other association with a duty to maintain the water management tract or the drainage flow. Lucerne Lakes Homeowners Association has not been asked to release their rights to the drainage easements. Sunrise of Palm Beach Condominium Association is responsible for the permitting and the maintenance of the weirs within the drainage system. They have not been asked to release their rights nor their responsibilities to the drainage systems and easements. The rights of these associations should not be removed without their consent. Also, if you'll recall, this project was approved in October amidst a large amount of opposition from the residents of Lucerne Lakes. The commission suggested that the residents, to enforce their rights, take civil action to preserve their rights within the recreation area, which includes the drainage easements. The Lucerne Lakes residents took the commission's advice, the litigation is ongoing. Therefore, we request that the commission deny the applicant's request until the court determines the residents' rights. Otherwise, your decision today could release the public's rights in an easement that, based on the court's ruling, could need to be restored. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I have a question.
Commissioner Kerner, you are up. Just by a hair.
We've been told repeatedly by our professional staff, who we trust and have great respect for, that there would be no prejudice, there would be no future concern or issues if we did this today. Is there a worst-case scenario? Can you give us some context about what, what could happen if we do this today? What could go wrong?
The applicant is seeking to remove the current drainage system so they can build on top of it. That current drainage system impacts the 1940 existing homes within the community. There is no agreement as, at this moment, as to how that drainage system will be replaced. So, you're talking about 1940 homes that are using this system for runoff and their current drainage, and we're just going to hand it over to someone else to take care of without an agreement in place.
And to professional staff, if I may, Mayor, is it true that there is not a drainage plan in the future if this, if and when this development moves forward?
Oh, yeah, the drainage will be approved through a land development permit. It's currently under review, but it's not approved yet.
Okay.
But, yeah, the, we're analyzing, or their engineers and then our staff have analyzed all of the existing flows into the existing golf course site that go into these water management tracks and ensure that the future system not, is sized both for what's currently there, plus the additional impervious area that's going to be created by their future development. But they can't start constructing that until they get a land development permit. And, yeah, so they, and they can't get a land development permit until they get technical compliance on their plat and engineering plans, which means that all of the, you know, the technical, or, you know, the development complies with all of the technical requirements of the ULDC.
Okay, and counsel had made a reference that while we may not have a county interest or infrastructure, that we have to protect the interests of the folks that live there, which in a lot of ways is one and the same. Is that true? Are we abandoning their interests in any way? Not legally, but are we not, are we jeopardizing their interests in any way?
No, legally, we're only abandoning any interest that the county has in this, in these drainage easements. Nothing that is private rights, none of the private rights are being affected by this action.
Right, we couldn't affect the private rights...
Correct.
... by vote. All right, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just reiterating what's in the staff report, it is written, "All reviewing agencies and utility providers have approved this abandonment, and the drainage easement service serves no present or future public purpose." Do you stand by that?
Yes, correct.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Sacks, you disappeared. Are you...
Commissioner Kerner very ably had the same question, so I defer. Thank you, sir.
All right. Vice Mayor?
As one of the minority up here who is not an attorney, so...
But you play one on TV.
It's free on this end, we're not attorneys.
We get blamed for a lot of things that attorneys do, but I just, I just want to clarify, and I think it's what my colleague, Commissioner Kerner, was alluding to, and it was brought up by, by counsel, was by us abandoning our easement and giving that up, that does not prejudice or change anything for the existing easements that the private, the homeowners there have in accessing that drainage. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, it was alluded to that somehow by us abandoning the county's easement, that we've somehow causing or disaffecting the residents' ability to continue to have safe drainage for their, for their properties. Is that, is that accurate?
Looking at me, yes.
I'm looking for somebody who can legally tell.
Correct. This, this application meets the standards in the statutes and in our ordinance, and we're only here to abandon the county's and public interest in this area. There is no private rights that are affected.
So, the HOAs that currently have easements in place that allow their properties to drain will continue to be allowed to drain?
They're not subject to this action.
And they're not subject to anything that we're doing, and so...
Correct.
Thank you.
And the legal term is no prejudice. Okay, so the four of us on this side, who are attorneys, and the three over there who are not...
Is that how we ended up over here?
That's how we run.
Thank God.
The smart ones are over here.
All right. I think we have debated this pretty far into the ground. Would anybody would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Commissioner Marino is making a motion to approve the staff recommendation to adopt the resolution abandoning any public interest in the drainage easements over and across the water management tracks shown as WMT 1, WMT 2, 3, 4, and 5, Lucerne Lakes course according to the plat thereof, as recorded, Plat Book 87, page 184 through 189, inclusive of public records of Palm Beach County. Do I have a second?
A second.
I'm looking for a second. Vice Mayor, are you going to do a second? Oh, I have, Commissioner McKinley has given us a second. Okay, all the non-attorneys are helping us out over here. All right, I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor, all opposed? Do I have any opposed?
Can you do a roll call?
I will do a roll call. I've been asked to do a roll call.
Commissioner Kerner?
You know, I had one more question that I forgot to ask, so if we could just hold the vote for a moment. If the board, I think I know the answer, but if the board doesn't grant, if we don't waive our interests, abandon today, there's no prejudice later on to, to do that in the future?
Correct, like with the zoning applications where they can't submit for a year or two, I don't believe our...
I mean, we could abandon our interest in easements at any time. Is that fair to say?
I know the ordinance pretty well, and I don't, I'm pretty sure that that is, that is fair to say.
Okay. Because I would like to be able to explore this issue a little bit further, and I'm not entirely confident that I understand precisely what's going on, despite the excellent questions that have been asked. So, I'm going to make a motion, a substitute motion to postpone this item until a later date.
I'm in the middle of a vote. Can I take the substitute motion?
Could you continue? I will withdraw my motion.
All right, so I've, the motion that was on the table has been withdrawn. Commissioner Kerner is making a substitute motion to postpone. The motion to postpone to a date certain or just to postpone?
Probably would want to provide some certainty to this for the...
This was advertised, right? So, I believe it would need to be a date certain, within 60 days, I believe, otherwise it would have to be re-advertised. I'm not sure of the exact amount of time.
I'm really not sure anything's going to change in 60 days, Commissioner.
Yeah, is there something that you were looking to see happen within the 60 days or within the timeframe so we can... days or within the timeframe so we can determine?
Just just for my ability to do some more due diligence, I will say that Mr. Lindley, I believe, I spoke with, and he had answered questions that I had at that time. But I'm are you Mr. Lindley?
I am, sir.
We spoke on the phone, I think.
Yes, sir.
So I apologize, I didn't recognize.
I don't know if I'm allowed to speak now, but I think I can help.
I will certainly grant you the opportunity to have as much time as you want to help Commissioner Kerner.
Okay, thank you. My name's David Lindley, I'm with Caulfield and Wheeler. I prepared the plat and the application for this abandonment. So I think the confusion is, is everybody's using the word "public." So the person that just spoke and others appear to think that the association, by your action today, if you granted us the abandonment, that it somehow affects the HOA and the association's easement rights. It has no effect at all. So essentially, on the same body of water, you have an easement that Palm Beach County has rights to. We have an easement that the HOA has rights to. We have an easement that the master has rights to, and then there's some really strange wording that says, "and any other association that abuts these lakes." Well, the interesting part about this is, the county has no easement to get to the lakes. The lakes themselves are in the middle of the golf course with no connection to the outside. The only people that have connections to the outside is the HOAs and the other people I listed. There are no other associations because no one else is around the lakes. So essentially, all we're asking for is we're asking you to release Palm Beach County's rights, and to us, we use the word "public," same with you. So there is no impact on any of the HOAs. They still have the private easements that are discussed, so then that negotiation is private between the developer and those HOAs. Does that help clear it up at all, or?
It does. Again, I hate I don't want to get into the substance of of what's going on between the community and the developer, but can you assure me that for for whatever reason, the project doesn't move forward, that we're not prejudiced in any way after abandoning these these easements?
Absolutely not, sir. I'm 100% certain.
Okay.
And I would rarely say 100%.
Okay, I'm lighting up like a Christmas tree here. Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I know for me, whether we postpone it for 60 days, I'm not prepared to support abandoning the county's rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard. Commissioner Sacks?
Sir, you're Mr. Lindley, and I know that you spoke with my office, and I might have spoken to you myself, but is Henry Handler is also involved with this issue?
Yes, ma'am.
Is Henry Mr. Handler here? I think I see him. Yeah, I wonder if you could come forward. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Okay, I'm looking for.
May I ask Mr. Handler a couple of questions?
Oh, absolutely. Would never want to deny Henry the opportunity to address us.
Thank you. Mr. Handler, as an attorney, is it true what the staff has represented to us, the county staff, that by abandoning this easement, we would not there would be no detriment to the county nor to the HOA?
I agree with the staff conclusion on both points.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right, we have no we have a motion to postpone, I think.
I'll withdraw my motion. One more thing, sir.
Oh, okay, wait a minute, let's let's make sure we know that there is no motion on the table. Commissioner Kerner has now withdrawn his motion. Now, Vice Mayor, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I just I just want to in in and of course, I want to give deference to my fellow commissioner, Commissioner Kerner, who I represented that area, and if you if you so desire a postponement, I would totally support that, but I do support abandoning our easement. I have consistently voted against this project, but at this point, this is about an easement that the county has, and it's clear that we have no need for it, and so it exists on paper only. So I would be supportive of it, but I certainly would support if if you want to move forward with your motion to spend have more time with it, I would support that as well.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Moreno, you want to try and put your motion back out there again?
Actually, I would, but Mr. Lindley, is there anything else you wanted to add before I do that?
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to add one more thing. So as Mr. Cantor expressed, we're in the review process for technical compliance. We're in the second set of comments, which means we're nearing completion. So originally, our our schedule to actually get technical compliance is in the middle of September. So that's 45 days away. Typically, what happens is is land development, once they're satisfied that we meet all the technical aspects, they will provide the technical compliance, and then we submit for something called a land development permit and plat recordation. All of the releases from the easement holders, including the county, will have then have to have signed off and have releases. If if it's more convenient for you guys, we've done something in the past called an easement in escrow, and we did it on a project, another golf course conversion called Delray Trails. And what we did is we provided an easement to the county, even though the county doesn't have a way to get to these lakes currently, and it's a blanket easement over the property. And land development or roadway, I forget who who is holding it now, but it's essentially a document signed by the property owner that gives you guys a drainage easement over the entire project until such time that the plat is recorded. So that is also an option. So and that's that's what I believe is going to happen with the private entities. That's the direction that we're moving.
Appreciate that, Mr. and Mr. Mayor, thank you for letting me respond.
Of course.
I do like that option. I'm trying my best not to intertwine issues here today, but there are times where, and I'm not suggesting that whoever's developing this would do this, but there are times where the conditions of approval aren't complied with, and there's other frustrations that we as commissioners have to deal with through our constituents, and I just I'm being cautious about releasing interest in our property if it's not absolutely necessary, not our property, in that property, if it's not absolutely necessary. So this concept that you're putting forward that's been used in the past gives me a little bit more comfort about moving forward.
One more thing, sir. On that project, as Mr. Cantor alluded to, that project actually received drainage from public roads, and they actually had a way to get from the public roads to these water management tracks, which currently the county does not. So that's the reason we went for that process on that project, because the county had actual, you know, they used the easements. So they needed some way to ensure that we got to the point where we could rebuild the lakes and the drainage system, and the county still had the rights. We needed the release of those rights so we could get the plat recorded and get a land development permit. So it was kind of a chicken and the egg thing. So this escrow document, that's why it was created. So once the plat actually gets recorded, there the plat is bonded, so all of the work to reconfigure the lakes is the county has assurance because of the bond. That same thing will happen on this project, because a bond will be required for the public improvements. The we also do this a lot with water utilities, where we need an easement release to get to the end, but an agency or could be a city, whoever, the county, has a document that says, hey, if the developer walks away and things go really bad, here's our easement. It's 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 it doesn't matter if it's recorded or not, it matters that it's signed by the entity who's able to give it, which I'm sure you four are all fully aware of that. So those three probably actually have another one.
Does it violate the rule against perpetuities, is my question?
Oh, you're way over my head there, but we have a lot of attorney. I know five.
So I'd like to try to execute on that option that Mr. Lindley, and you've been very helpful to this process, and I appreciate that, Mr. Lindley, is there a way to move forward on that option today?
Yes, we could do it a couple of ways. I mentioned I mentioned the escrow earlier. We will do that when the easements currently do take county road drainage, so that's why we didn't do it here. But if that would give, you know, some, you know, level of comfort, we could do it a couple of ways. We I guess we could hold on recording the resolution until we receive those executed easements, or I guess the other way. I mean, there's no way to condition it, but I mean, if if he says he'll give it to us within the next month, but probably that probably wouldn't be a so maybe before recording the resolution, we could they would provide us with the blanket easements. And I'd ask, would you Mr. Lindley mentioned blanket over the entire site, would you want it just over the abandonment site? Like, so there would be nothing lost, or is it?
Yeah, I would prefer that. I was giving the example over the entire site on the other project because that actually see that received the county's road drainage, but we'll be happy to give you the same easement, right, fully executed by the underlying owner today, which is Grillo, for the same descriptions and whatever's in the application for the abandonment. And if we use that same legal, the county's already reviewed all that, county survey and county land development, so you're getting exactly what I'm asking you to abandon. I will tell you that I do a lot of this, and in many municipalities, mostly cities, not counties, they actually do condition the abandonments, more so that, hey, we reserve the right for utility easement over the top of it, or you have to do these three things before this thing becomes effective. I have I've seen that a lot. I haven't seen it a lot lately, but I actually, over the course of, you know, I've been doing it for a minute, I've actually seen quite a number of them. So I don't know the county's attorney stance on that, but I've seen that as well.
Well, it sounds like you've done this concept in unincorporated Palm Beach County before.
Yes, sir.
So at least I know that they're familiar with it. So I guess the motion is the motion that's been published along with because we will be abandoning the easements today, but what other language do I need to add on to capture this vision?
That the, you know, the the recordation of the abandonment resolution cannot take place until the county receives an executed easement over the abandonment site, an executed drainage easement over the abandonment site.
That's my.
To be held in escrow.
To be held in escrow.
All right, Commissioner Kerner has adopted the language that's been put forward by Mr. Cantor. I have a second by Commissioner Bernard. Okay, all my lights are off. I think we're ready to have a vote. Do I need a roll call? I don't think so. I think we made a unanimous decision here. All in favor, all opposed, it's unanimous, seven to zero. Thank you for your assistance, belt and suspenders, everybody's happy.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
We're going to move on now. We already took 18. We killed 19. We already killed 20. We did 21. It's time to move on to county attorney's remarks.
No comments.
No comment. Zoning Director?
No comment.
Planning Director?
No comments.
Executive Director?
Just want to say thanks to staff. It's been a super busy month, and we've got a big month coming up next month, so just thanks for the hard work.
Thank you. Assistant County Administrator? No comment. Commissioners, starting from my right, Commissioner McKinley.
Yes, I've got two items, Mr. Mayor. The first one is a board appointment, if that's okay.
Do I have a second? I got a second by Commissioner Moreno. All in favor, all opposed, seven to zero.
Okay, so my board appointment is to appoint, I make a motion to appoint Katrina Long, reappoint Katrina Long Robinson to the Advisory Commission on Women.
I have a second by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed, seven to zero.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Mayor, my comment is actually I want to thank the county attorney's office for their diligent defense of the ordinance we passed related to conversion therapy, which of course is received unfavorable attention at the appellate level. I would like to ask, though, the Palm Beach County Human Rights Coalition testified before us that they would assist in the cost of that litigation, and I would like a follow-up at some point from the county's county attorney's office and exactly how they financially assisted us in defense of that ordinance.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. Commissioner Moreno, you're recognized.
Thank you, I have no comments.
Very good. Okay, we'll go to Commissioner Kerner.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one appointment, the reappointment of Alex Ayala, school board member, to the Advisory Commission on Women.
I remember that person. I have a second by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed?
And then one question, Mayor, if I may. Why was the and I must have missed it in my agenda review, but why was the number, item 19, the tow truck stuff postponed?
Staff?
We had a snafu in the advertising.
Okay, all right, so there wasn't some.
We will get it reset as quickly as possible.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just want to thank staff. This was a long meeting with a lot of items on the agenda, and thank you for your hard work and your diligent effort. Thank you.
Yeah, we had more talk about easements than I really, really anticipated. Commissioner Sacks, what you got to say?
I want to just reiterate what Commissioner Bernard said, to thank the staff, work very hard, and I'm I'm not a land use attorney, so I ask a lot of questions. Easements was not one of my favorite topics in law school, but I learn more than I really want to sometimes, but I want to thank you for your patience with me and your informative reviews. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of District Four, I would like to request a couple of site proclamations declaring August 1st through 7th as International Clown Week, and declaring Sept- I know if you're afraid of clowns, don't blame me. And declaring September 15th as Oxford House Appreciation Day.
Do I have a second?
No.
Mr. Mayor, I will happily second that. As a kid who grew up in Sarasota, which is the home of the Ringling Brothers and Barnum and Bailey Circus, I'd be happy to support that for you.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. I appreciate that. Commissioner Kerner, you have some remarks on that?
No remarks, Mayor, but one of my staff members wanted me to ask if do they get to use your electric car?
Absolutely. It could be a clown car.
Yes. That was from Dave Bernhardt, by the way.
I had a feeling. Okay, all in favor, all opposed, the clown car is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you. And then just I also I had an intern, again, returning. Kate Devaney was working in my office this summer. Tomorrow's going to be her last day, and just what a pleasure it's been to have Kate as part of our my staff, and I, as Commissioner McKinley said, we are in very good hands for the future. She's just a remarkable young lady, and I look forward to her continued success as she goes off to college this fall.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I'll finish by saying, a group of us were out in Colorado last week as part of the National Association of Counties. It was a very good opportunity to network with our our county commissioners throughout the country and also do some continuing education. I know from my own personal perspective, I hate the dry weather, I hate being above sea level, so I'm happy to be home. With that being said, we are adjourned.